President of the Weslaco ISD Board of Trustees. This board workshop is being conducted in compliance with Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least seventy-two hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is five twenty-seven, and I call this workshop to order. I'll now begin the roll call. Call any board member by name. Signify your presence by saying here or present when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Present.
Mrs. Jackie Sustaita?
Present.
Coach Jesse Trevino? I know he's here somewhere.
Yeah.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez? Mr. Mark Del Osantos?
Present.
And Mr. Andrew Gonzalez?
Present.
Coach Trevino is present.
Present.
Let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. Item three, public comments?
There are none.
Let's go to item four, discussion on the 2022-2023 budget. Dr. Coronel.
Board President, members of the board, I'd like to present the, this is a budget workshop. I'd like to propose the compensation plan, which is also an item in the regular board agenda. This would also be the opportunity to make any significant changes or suggestions that you may have before we vote on it. So I'll briefly go over what the staff has come up with and in terms of affordability and where we're at financially, specifically when it comes to salaries. Next slide, please. So as again, if you remember, the last time the board had approved an organizational structure for administration, it was 2018. This is a new one that I am proposing, that we adopt. Again, this streamlines, it narrows it somewhat. Have two assistant superintendents for school leadership. They take care of the feeder itself. The deputy superintendent with four executive directors and then an assistant superintendent for teaching, learning, and innovation. Also, the director of athletics and the executive director for district communications. Kind of streamlines some of the concerns that we have. I always talk about line and staff. The line itself is, will always be parent, student, teacher, principal, superintendent. That has to be the line. If you're not one of those positions, or parent or student, then you support the staff. So, but that's always the line that I talk about. Parent, student, teacher, principal, and superintendent. So that's the line. Next. The background on this, the Tasby study was initiated in August 2021 by this school board. This will be the first time that our compensation plan will actually be live and available on the website. We took a lot of recommendations from Tasby that was briefed on May twelfth. We've aligned some positions and pay grades, consolidated some, and then what we did is we made some local market adjustments specifically for some of our auxiliary staff and our bus drivers. And then many of our, some of our positions were paid outside the pay structures, so we've had to reevaluate some of those, and we'll discuss those specifically. The goals and objectives, again, one, we wanted to establish an equity position and maintain pure equity within the same pay grades for internal. We wanted to make sure that Weslaco remains competitive. Given this, pending your approval, we still become very competitive, if not the highest paid in the Rio Grande Valley. We wanted to make sure also that it was sustainable. We've been looking at a lot at where we're at now, where we've been, and our plans to move forward. Rather than doing one-time stipends, we want, because people do the stipends amount using ESSER funding because they can't sustain, they can't sustain giving their employees a consistent pay raise. We think we can do better. We know we can do better, and so we are going to, my recommendation will be to move forward so that we can sustain this, and I don't think we'll have an issue. Inflation is through the roof right now. It's the highest since 1981. We will try to do everything we can to keep up with the inflation. Of course, many organizations right now are faced with the rising cost of a myriad of things, food, fuel. I mean, it's getting a little ridiculous, so we want to make sure that we can try to stay up with inflation, although that's really hard right now given the fast rate. Room for growth, it allows us, it's scalable. In other words, our compensation plan will be scalable for growth into the future. I've challenged the district and all staff. We have about 2,200 employees, and so I sent an email out to all employees, and I said if we can get to, if we increase our enrollment by a thousand students, we'll increase our salaries by five percent across the board, plus pay for their health benefits. So Weslaco ISD definitely is the place to be. And then we want to be able to recruit and retain high-quality employees. Next. So here's what the study showed us. They gave us three models, as you remember, last week. We're going to recommend model three, which is the three percent pay raise. They conducted a staffing study to address overstaffing. I will tell you, the Tasby recommendation did, in fact, recommend that we reduce staff by 168 people. 168 positions is what they saw that we were currently overstaffed, to include 27 teachers. With this, with that in mind, I'm recommending zero, zero cuts for any employees that currently work for WISD. I'll also show in later slides what our natural attrition has been and where we're at. So we think we can sustain with what we have and just have some natural attrition go by. We also conducted a salary study through Tasby, and we made some adjustments from there. The academic, so we've also looked at athletic stipends. The only stipends that were underfunded were football. All the other ones were above-market rate, and I'll show you some of those that we did. Academic stipends are still under review by Tasby. There were a lot of the academic stipends.
Dr. Coronel?
Yes.
Could you explain for the public what attrition, through the loss of attrition, through attrition, how we're?
The people, so natural retirements, resignations, that's mostly, and sadly, death. So when people normally leave an organization, they leave on their terms and not so much ours.
And so once they're gone, they won't be replaced? That position?
That's correct.
They'll use internal staff to put it to those positions?
That's correct. Because we're already over by the 167 positions, we have enough people. As people leave, we can backfill with those positions. Okay? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Our pay structures, what we did is we condensed many of our pay ranges. We're very, we're very wide and very deep in a lot of the, in the pay structure, so what we've done was we've narrowed it down and developed a hierarchy of systems, or positions, rather. So we, rather than having a step increase, we've determined that, what Tasby suggested, that we have a minimum mid and maximum. So a minimum pay salary, the midpoint of their salary, and then their max salary. So just understand that if you are in a position, let's say for an example, you're in a director position, and the max salary for that director, I'll just, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but let's just say it's $100,000, and that current employee is making $105,000, that person has already maxed their pay grade. So there, that means they will not see an increase because they've already reached their max. So the only way they can see an increase is one, is if we do an across-the-board pay raise, or if they get promoted. So certain positions are capped, in other words. Next slide. So this is an example of the teacher pay scale with the three percent pay raise. We're looking at about a $1,700 increase across the board, which is equivalent to about three percent, and it's based on an average salary. So again, five steps, I call it an autocorrect because we need to be able to keep up with the market. So you can see the teachers of experience with zero, two, three, four, and five, we had to, we had to have an adjustment for those initial teacher salaries. So teachers with five years or less of experience will get an additional adjustment to their salary. So for last year, our average teacher salary was fifty-five, almost 55.7. This year, it's 57, 232, which is about $1,566 increase, again, making us probably the highest in the Rio Grande Valley. So this is what our pay grades used to look like. If you look at to the right of your, of the screen, you see that the proposed schedules in the past were 101 and 202, and you can see all the positions in the 101. They were, what happened was, they, instead of just saying counselor, South Palm Gardens, counselor elementary, it's just counselor, right? So what we had to do, and the only thing that will different will be the number of days. So now, look at pay grade number 101, right? That's going to be the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum of their salary now. Same thing with the example of 202. So once we know what that position, once, and we'll have in the compensation plan, every position will be, is a pay grade, and that's where, that's where you fall into in terms of your salary. Again, minimum means you just started. You have no experience. For example, accountant at pay grade 202. Let's say you just graduated, you're an accountant, you have zero experience, you start at the minimum. Now, let's say you have five years of experience. So now, we know that, we know that your maximum is basically 25 years of experience, so that means with five years of experience, you're going to be above the minimum but below the maximum. Okay? Next slide. So again, all positions have been realigned to create a hierarchy pathway. And so some staff in the positions may receive an additional adjustment, just as I said, for the teachers and those years, those teachers that are five years or less. Those employees have already been identified by Tasby. Next. Again, this is another example of the instructional support. Again, this is what it used to look like under 501, and the new one for 2223, it's just whatever the pay grade is in that position, and so every job description will actually have the pay grade for that position. So it's very clean. It doesn't leave, we have to be allowed some discretion in terms of where we place people. And so what was happening before was, well, we don't have that position, or we need to create this position, and so it didn't allow us the flexibility to put people into certain pay grades. So this allows us to do that. The academic stipend schedule, again, we don't have all of them yet, but this is an example of the addition. So we have a group four example of $500 for the Texas Math and Science Coaches Association. We never had that before, so we added that. We also changed a high school technology coordinator to a campus communications coordinator. So you can see some of the changes that we've done to really streamline some of this. And then we've taken out group nine, which is the elementary instructional coach. And the reason we've done that is because we've allocated two instructional coaches per campus now that we've, that we've, that we will actually allow funding for, or allocate funding for. So what we want to be able to really do is get rid of the stipends altogether for some positions and just make it part of their salary. And I'll give you a perfect example. The head trainer, again, we were giving, we were issuing $20,000 stipend. Well, that's just their job, so why don't we just encumber that into their regular salary, right? And now they're at the market level. So now we, and now also, we do them a favor, right? Well, it's really not a favor, it's just, it's all credible now to TRS, so it helps their retirement. So, and again, these are the performing arts stipend schedule that we're looking at, and these are in addition to. So this is the one that seems to be the most challenging for us. As you can see, what we've done is we've, we've changed some things around because we used to have two defensive coordinators, two offensive coordinators, this is per team. So, and so now we've, in most football teams, they only have one defensive coordinator, one offensive coordinator, one special teams coordinator. And so what we've done is we reduced by three, but we've increased. Now, Tasby had indicated that we were actually below market when it comes to our defensive coordinator, offensive coordinator, and special teams coordinator. So we've actually increased our, those three positions to 13.7. Our varsity football assistants were 7,900, and we've increased those to $10,000, and I'll explain that here on the next slide. So we've added the varsity football first assistant. In other words, that person is the assistant football coach, and that makes it even more competitive. Now, with that in mind, here's what we removed. We've removed the athletic video coordinator, athletic equipment coordinator, football scouting coordinator, strength coach, stadium supervisor, PE coordinator, and offseason coordinator. These were classified as auxiliary stipends, but the way I, I saw it, we discussed this, and this came to a lot of discussions, but if we're going to pay our football assistants $10,000, they can start doing some of these other duties and not get paid an extra stipend. So these just, no one else has these really stipends. A PE coordinator, I don't know what that is, but the principals are responsible for the PE teachers itself, and then the, of course, if they're coaches, then they fall under some jurisdiction for the athletic coordinator and the athletic director for the district. So, you know, again, I question these stipends, and I know it hurt some feelings, but my recommendation is that we remove these stipends because they're just too hard to justify, but what we did is, in terms of cuts, we added on the other side. Next. These are our attrition trends. So in 2020, we lost 156 employees through natural attrition. In 2021, we've lost 154, and in this year, to date, we've lost 147. So contrary to what was posted on social media that we're firing everybody, clearly is not true. So again, we've only, we've only lost 147 through natural attrition. Again, Tasby suggested that we cut 168, we've cut zero. So just to kind of dispel that. So next slide. So these are our salary trends. From 2020, you can see, these are our total salaries regardless of revenue source. This has been the total budget salary. So even with a three percent pay raise, our projected 2023 salary is 147, which is still below 2020, 2021, and 2022. So this would be the time, members of the board, that if we wanted to have a discussion on making any other type of changes, you have the compensation plan in total, and if you have any questions, subject to your questions, that really concludes this part of the compensation plan.
May I? Do you want to have questions? Dr. Coronado?
Yes.
I was looking at the athletic stipend, and I'm looking at cheerleading because that one, the one for middle school, sponsored cheerleading is clearly way lower than everybody else, and I know that is a year-round event where the cheerleaders are practicing, and they go to the high school games also, and they go to the middle school games, and they're, it's an all-year-round thing, and their stipend is significantly lower than everybody else's. So I don't know if we can look at that one.
It's on page forty-five.
Page forty-five.
Let's see. Page forty, cheerleading, oh.
Yeah, way at the bottom.
Oh, mine is cut off.
Would you like to borrow this one? Just because I know it's a lot of work, I've seen, you know, that they're, they're after school, and they're there all year, and it's really the only one that stuck out to me as way less than everybody else.
Yeah, I agree. My, no wonder I didn't see it, because mine is cut off. No, we can change that. May I ask what you'd like to see that at?
Is it something you can study and just take a look at it? Because we're not deciding anything tonight, nothing's set on concrete, because we can't take any action.
No, but we can take action on, but it is taking action tonight, sir, for, it is an agenda item. So if we wanted to make changes.
Right, but after the workshop, you can get with your staff real quick while we take a five-minute break or whatever, just to?
Okay.
Evaluate that number.
And then decide on the number during the meeting?
So, let me look at, let me look at the cheerleaders to see what's available, and then we'll go from there. How's that sound? And then when we, when we have the, as the discussion item, I can tell you what we can, exactly, okay.
The other one that I want to consider is the cross-country track, because that falls under the year-round position, because that, that coach is working cross-country and then working track, which is a full-year thing, and that deserves some consideration. So whatever the year-round coaches are making, that person should be making that also.
Okay.
Does he give us a new one? See, the new one says ten thousand.
So cross-country and cheerleading.
Cross-country, cross-country track.
Cross-country is revised on the revision that we have.
Yes, it's already revised.
We have revisions, and it's already been revised.
Did I make, is that the one that we did the 10,000?
Yes.
Yes, we did it to 10,000.
Yes.
No, but I'm saying golf is year-round, so the head coach is making 11.7?
Mm-hmm.
Here, they're only making 10,000.
Oh, I see.
And that's, and that's, that's really a year, year, year-round.
Oh, I see. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Dr. Coronado, for me, I would like for us to consider, I know video, I had a program before, and I used to pay a freshman stipend to a video coordinator, because those guys video during, during the game, they take care of all the video during practice times, and I'm talking about 5A, 6A programs. Not only, and obviously, I know, I know we, you, I saw the slide there from the removals, the stipends that you removed on, but I am going to ask you to consider, because all these assignments are additional to the coaching that takes place. So we're asking individuals, and I was, I mean, I was here at East, and I was a equipment coordinator, and I guarantee nobody else wanted that position, because that's, 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 and like, coach, right now, by the year-round, that truly is a year-round position for this equipment coordinator, because you hand out all the equipment at the beginning, you account for all the equipment after the, after the season, you order all the equipment for the following season, then you inventory what you have left. It's really a year-round task for the equipment coordinator, and that's just an example. For your strength coach and offseason coordinators, you know, those two positions, again, pertain to big-time programs. I believe here at WISD, we are two established programs that require a strength coach. Nobody wants to stay in the weight rooms till, till 5:30, 6 o'clock. So those guys, the, especially for your offseason coordinator, the games are won in the offseason, not, not in August. Our off-seasons are the most important part of a, of any program, not just football. So those off-season, that offseason coordinator position is extremely important. I used to lay out a calendar for everybody in the program from as soon as the season was over in December to the start of August. And there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of, that needs to take place that your typical regular coach that's doing the coaching is not going to do, you know, so, you know, I wouldn't like, there's a lot of duties involved there that may not come to light or may not be visible to the person, but a lot of the work done by those guys is done behind the scenes, your strength coach.
So, so, Coach, may I ask?
Yes.
Then, so if we wanted to keep some of these coaching stipends?
Yes.
The video coordinator and strength and conditioning, so this, this would be, this would be my suggestion then. Then we reduce the $10,000 stipend off your varsity assistants.
But you already?
And so, because they're being paid well over. They, they went from 7,900 to $10,000. So if, and so which one of those seven or eight varsity assistants aren't doing any of these other things? So are these individuals outside of the normal coaching staff, or are they in addition to?
These are normal duties outside of your coaching duties that, that people are assigned to take care of.
So during the game, so during the game, are they on the field or are they behind the video?
Your, for example, your video coordinator, we come in after a game, we, there's guys assigning laundry, there's guys that stay back and input information for the, whatever software we had, I can't even recall right now, the football program that we had, the huddle, there's information that you have to input, so those guys end up staying there till 12:30, 1 o'clock in the morning.
Coach, I, I understand. So what I'm saying is, is that we have, we have given?
Yes.
We have increased the varsity assistant stipends to accommodate those duties. Now, if, what you're suggesting is, is that we add these, we keep these stipends, then I don't have a problem with that, but I'm going to lower, I'm going to recommend that we lower those varsity assistants, and they can go back down to 7,500 if they're not doing these other duties. But I just, I don't, I don't understand why, if I, if I'm, if I'm paying a coach, and again, I was a coach, if, but if I'm paying you $10,000, what, you can't be a strength coach too?
There's, there's a lot of planning, I understand what you're saying, and, and I'm going to tell you, coaching in Texas, or coaching here in this area of the valley, or this area of Texas, or even is, consists of a lot of extra duties. It's not, it's not your typical coaching duties that were done back in, back in our time. I mean, there's, there's coaching duties here involved that, that require a lot of extra planning. For example, your video coordinator, your video coordinator doesn't only work during the season, after the season, they're helping make cutoffs, they're helping make, they're cleaning up the huddle system, there's, there's things that are done year-round that these coaches are not being compensated for. Football season only lasts for, you know, here, here, three to four months. After that, they're still, it's a year-round thing for these guys. And some of these duties that fall on, I mean, you don't want every single person involved with a strength coach. There's, you normally have that one guy that, that's your, your, your specific knowledge, is strength coach, so he's monitoring every single guy, there, he's dividing, I mean, there's, he's dividing groups, he's, he's monitoring the student's progress.
So if I'm a coach, and I make $10,000 for, I'm a varsity assistant coach, and I make $10,000, and let's say I don't make it to the playoffs, right? So my season is done. So my season is done at the end of November or after Thanksgiving and I'm done, right? So I've made ten thousand dollars in four months and I, I, is that correct?
I'm going to disagree with you. It's not ten thousand in, in four months, it's going to be ten thousand throughout the summer.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying, Coach. It's, if it's ten thousand dollars for the entire year, then they should be part of some of these other duties. Now, so again, I would agree, I, I would, I would definitely agree with you. If, if it is important that we keep a strength coach stipend, then I, then I, I, then we need to lower the varsity assistant stipend. It's going to be a hard sell to the public to, to pay an assistant coach ten thousand dollars and pay them a strength coach of thirty-four hundred dollars in the offseason. I, I, I just can't.
I know we, I know we've increased this already to ten thousand dollars, but from what it was before, seventy-nine-hundred, I think that was still at your lower pay, pay scale for...
It was four hundred and thirty dollars lower than the market.
Okay.
It was four hundred and thirty dollars. According to the Tasby study, the football coaches were paid four hundred and thirty-four dollars under market. So at seventy-nine-hundred, so they should have made seventy-three hundred dollars, seventy-hundred, seventy-three fifty. So if, if we want to stick to seventy-three fifty, now they're at market. So I'll, I'll, I'll recommend that we, we make the adjustments to seventy-three fifty, all the coaches, and then we'll go ahead and add, add the rest of these stipends in. But that means, that's it.
You know, comment there, Coach, I agree with Coach there on, on the different situations there because there are some coaches that are going to lose money and we don't want them to lose money. I mean, most of them are experienced coaches that have been here for quite a while and they don't work, both East and Westco High, we're talking football right now, they've been in the playoffs for the last ten years. They always extend their season, the majority of the time, except for COVID year. But a lot of times, coaches put in more time, even if whether a video coordinator or, or equipment coordinator, they, they do put a lot of hours. And when you look at how much they make per hour, you'd be surprised, even though with this stipends. I believe, you know, you can adjust, like you said, Dr. Coronado, adjust the football coaches' stipends and keep these stipends that are earmarked for those coaches that have been doing it for many years.
What I'm looking at is that we want to add a varsity football assistant for sixteen thousand, well, why don't you have that guy do everything there? I mean, you know, you're going to add something, whatever these other people are doing that can't be done from the other coaches, you have somebody there that we're going to add on, have them do it then.
There are twelve coaches, there are twelve coaches that stand to lose money. According to, to the current stipend salary, I gave a copy of, of, of this to all of you. We have, I don't know if you know how many coaches are on this list, but all of them are listed, every single athletic coach is on this list.
Correct.
Some are taking a big hit, maybe because they're not a defensive, or they're not a varsity assistant. We, we were spending two-point-one million dollars in athletic stipends, two-point-one million dollars for athletic stipends. I, I just, again, I, I'm trying to accommodate the athletics as best I can, the money goes, for every dollar we spend towards adults, we take away from kids. And so I've already conceded that, that the money they make at the gate goes back to athletics. And this year was two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to date. That goes back to athletics because that's money that was made on the backs of kids. So that, so I've given them that. So, because they've earned it, so I really didn't give it to them, they've earned it. It never has gone back to athletics, it always went into our general fund. So I'm, I'm saying, if, if, Coach, if you're saying these are the must-haves, then that means I need to go back to the drawing board and I'm going to reduce the other coaching stipends to pay for this.
Well...
Because, because we cannot exceed two-point-one million dollars. We, in fact, I, my, my limit was one-point-eight in stipends giving, so basically I was going to, I was, basically with the three-hundred-thousand-dollar savings in stipends plus the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and in some cases it's, it's on a good year without COVID, it's about four-hundred to five-hundred thousand. That puts about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars back into athletics, back into athletics for kids. And, and so, and again, so if we want these auxiliary stipends, then I'm going to have to go back to the drawing board and I'm going to have to figure out and reallocate the coaching stipends to make it equitable. Because right now, I, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why we're paying somebody ten thousand dollars in the stipend and they can't, they can't be a strength coach?
Well, they, they can, but it, but obviously right now we're...
They went from thirty-four hundred dollars. So let's say they were, let's say they, we paid them eight thou, let's make the math easy. So let's say they were making eight thousand dollars in a coaching assistant, okay? Plus they made the strength coach of a thirty-four hundred dollars, that's eleven-four. So it's a fourteen-hundred-dollar cut. Well, they're teachers first and they're going to get a seventeen-hundred-dollar pay raise. So they've lost zero dollars and they're doing the same thing. So if, if that's the direction we want to go, then I, I, you know, we'll go that way. But my recommendation is to remove these stipends, increase their stipend and assign the duties otherwise and leave it up to the head football coach to assign those duties. But if, if, if the recommendation of the board is to put these back, then, then I'll, I'll go back and I'll lower the other ones.
I would just like for us to, to take a closer look at, at, I mean, the ten thousand dollars is great, Doctor, but I'm still saying that these duties are in addition to. I, and I know the Tasby study is across the state, but we, we are in a unique area where the valley is the highest paid and the major, and a lot of times it is the highest paid when it comes to football or, football or any coaching. If you look at all our surrounding schools, I took a pay cut when I came from Sabanito as a coach, I took a pay cut coming to Westco ISD, but my teaching made up the difference. But the coaching was still, so I, coaching stipends have always been very low. Last year I think was the first year we gave them an increase.
I don't, Coach, you know, I, and I'm sorry, but I, if you look at the coaching stipends and, and you look at the old stipend amount, you have some of these guys making twenty-thousand, twenty-seven thousand dollars. How do I, how do we explain that to, to, to our public? How do we explain that, that, that he's going to, he's coaching football after school for, and, and he's coaching multiple things and, and yet fifty, fifty percent of our kids can't read. So, so I mean, so I, I think, you know, I'm just trying to put this in perspective without trying to be argumentative. And, and again, I, I just have a, I, I, I have a hard time with the auxiliary stipends, obviously.
Yes.
But I don't have a hard time paying the stipends and asking our coaches to do more. I, I don't have a problem with that. And that's, and that's, I guess that's my recommendation. My recommendation is that we pay our, our, our coaches more and have them take on those additional duties. When, when I was a coach, again, back in the day, I got thirty-five hundred dollars. I did laundry, I did equipment, I, I did video, I did scouting, I, all for thirty-five hundred dollars. I think I got twenty-five cents an hour. So of course that won't tell you how long ago that was, but, you, you know, but again, so now we're paying these guys what, twenty-seven thousand, on average fifteen thousand dollars to do something that is fun?
Dr. Coronado?
Yes.
If you, if you may, just real quick, I know it's an agenda item for later in the other meeting and I know there's concerns from some. And, and I'm looking at, at some of these coaches, but you know, we have about six or seven that stand to lose ten to fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. It's kind of late in the season for them to go look for a new job if that's what they so desired. But is there a way we can have a special meeting at least for that one agenda item next week to really just evaluate? And if the way to go is still to remove the auxiliary stipends, then we proceed to do so?
So what we can do on the agenda item that we have for the regular meeting is we can approve the compensation plan minus the stipend schedule since the academic stipend is not...
Correct. And mine's cut out, Doc. I, I just want to make sure that our middle school coaches aren't going to be cut anything, you know?
No, it didn't look like it worked.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, because on one paper I had twenty-four hundred, but here it says three, so I want to make sure it's this one and not, not what was...
It, it's the one that you just got. We, we adjusted, we've been making adjustments to this, five minutes before the board meeting.
They won't be losing. But yeah, so you know, just, so it's not a rushed decision, you know, with your team and, and you can hear some of the other concerns and we just move forward and then if not, then we go back with removing and we have a special board meeting, kind of easy, fifteen minutes, knock it out. Like you said, we can approve the budget as is without the stipends.
I had a question, Dr. Coronado. It's kind of changing direction here. I know we're talking about athletic stipends and whatnot, but I know in the Tasby study I saw that teachers that have a master's and teach in a core content area, their stipend is below the market value. Is, is that something that's being, is being looked at and addressed in the compensation plan as an increase?
Yes, yes, sir. We haven't, again, we don't have the academic stipends back. So again, we, we're, we're going to pay a teacher with a master's degree, a thousand dollars, but we're going to, we're, we're going to pay somebody a stipend to do video, you know, for thirty-four hundred dollars.
And that's, and that's exactly what I'm getting to is that, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at academics here and I'm looking at the stipends that we pay those teachers that have a master's degree in the core content area that they teach and they're getting a thousand dollars. I saw that the market value minimum was, average was fifteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred.
Yeah, fourteen hundred. And I think we need to, we need to look at that and increase that because those teachers with those specialized skills, it went above and beyond to specialize in that area. Those are the ones that we got to keep, you know, that's my, that's my priority, my concern. I know that's not being discussed today, but I think that's something we also need to discuss and look at too.
And I think that's why I kind of wanted, maybe if we table it, take a look at it and just approve the...
The compensation piece?
The compensation piece, you know, have a, a special board meeting just with that one agenda item. So all these concerns, I mean, Marcos is right, you know, when, my niece doesn't teach in this district, but I'm only getting a thousand dollars more, you know, yet it cost her fifty thousand dollars.
Because right now...
To get it.
Because right now, if we're looking at the state situation, we're seeing a drastic shortage on teachers, experienced teachers, and there's some districts that are extremely increasing pay scales above market value and they're also offering a lot of stipends and also performance stipends as well too. So I know we're talking about athletics and that's a topic of discussion now, but if we're looking to approve the compensation plan, let's look at academics as well. I mean, especially that one, that stuck out to me a lot too, that you have a teacher teaching in a classroom, you know, in, in a core content area, only getting a thousand dollars and they went back and got a master's in that area. That makes, you know, they're specializing in that, in that content. So if we cannot forget about that.
I agree. And, and again, we don't have the academic stipends yet from Tasby, but they are lower. We're an academic institution, we're not an athletic institution. Athletics is extracurricular. And so I, I'm just trying to, to establish some equity. And again, for every dollar that we provide adults, we take away from kids. And so creating a, a positive learning environment means they go to the classroom. They, they spend, they spend seven and a half hours a day in our classrooms and, you know, UIL only permits or limits the number of time they can spend in extracurricular activities. So I, I think we need to put, you know, our, our budget is our priorities. Our, a budget is a reflection of an organization's priorities. Our academics needs to be a priority. We got our preliminary scores from our EOC scores and we, we need to focus on academics. We're, we're below, we came in below the region and, and the, and the state academically for the EOCs. So I, I think that our academics needs to be addressed. But subject to, to any further questions, that concludes the, I guess, the compensation plan.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Coronado. If we have no further questions, we will now go to item five adjournment.
Some of...
Okay, the time is six-oh-nine and we have adjourned from the workshop. Are we ready to start our...
Conducting a compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least seventy-two hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is six-ten and I call this meeting to order. I'll now begin the roll call. Call any board member by name. Signify your presence by saying here or present. Mr. Vizcudaro Nieto?
Present.
Mrs. Jackie Sustaita?
Present.
Coach Jesse Treviño?
Present.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez?
Present.
Mr. Mark De Los Santos?
Present.
Mr. Andrew Gonzalez?
Present.
Let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. I did not catch the arrival time for Dr. Rodriguez, I know it was a little bit ago, so...
It was about six, yeah, six o'clock.
At six o'clock. Well, let the record reflect that Dr. Rodriguez joined the workshop at six o'clock and now we have everyone in, in, in attendance. We now go to item three, opening prayer. Dr. Coronado?
Board President, I'd like to introduce, and members of the board, I'd like to introduce Monica Garcia, third-grade teacher at Rico Elementary.
Good evening. Let's go ahead and bow our heads so we can pray. Heavenly Father, we praise your holy and mighty name. We thank you for your unconditional love and your countless blessings. Father, we come before you asking that you meet the needs of our students, our staff and our community and that you continue to protect our schools. Lord, we ask that you guide this meeting tonight. Fill each board member with your wisdom. May every decision made here tonight be according to your will. In Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
Amen.
Item four, pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge. Dr. Coronado?
I'd like to turn this over to our executive director, soon-to-be executive director of District Communications, Mr. Carlos Rubelo.
Good evening, Coach Coyar, Dr. Coronado, members of the board. I would like to introduce two students if they could step up over here from Rico Elementary. How about a big hand? We have a couple of students here. First, we have Alexander Rivera, who is the son of Ebo Rivera and Lydia Solano. He is a member of the Rico News, Rico Book Club, Junior Lighthouse and Rico Kindness Club. This year he read one million words and became a Riconair. When he grows up, he would like to attend Brigham Young University and become an engineer. How about a big hand for Alexander Rivera? And if his parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Also with us here tonight, we have Emma Lopez, who is the daughter of Christina Pina and Eduardo Lopez. She is a member of the Rico Cheer Squad, Rico News, Rico Book Club and participated in the Little Wildcat Relays. When she grows up, she would like to be a teacher or become a small business owner. In her words, she would like to give Starbucks a run for its money. She would like to open up a coffee shop. How about a big hand for Emma Lopez? And if her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Okay, can everyone please rise and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, students, whenever you are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge? Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, awards and recognitions. Okay, item five, awards and recognitions. Dr. Cudno?
Board President and members of the board, Carlos?
Yes. We have plenty of awards. We have a room full of parents and, of course, plenty of people to recognize, so let's go ahead and get everything started. Let's start off with some of our successful fine art students. As they come into the building here, how about we give them a big hand? Perfect, thank you. So, well, these are students from Westlaco High School, where all three bands received sweepstakes recognition at the UIL concert site reading evaluation. The bands earned three straight ones from the judges. So, as I say your name, if you could please step forward or raise your hand so that we can recognize you, okay? And so, representing Westlaco High School Honors Band, section leaders, we'll start off with Cesar Cortez. Raymond Sanchez. Marina Garcia. Alexia Tirado. Gabriel Ray. Destiny Cruz. Lizzie Seville. Anthony Ortiz. Angel Colon. Francisco Riojas. Leila Montolongo. Fernando Perez. We also have students here representing the Symphonic Band. Rosalyn Santiago, or De Santiago. Kirsten Ramirez. Triton Herrera. Sarah Cantu. Dominica Ramirez. Roque Martinez. Kayla Perez. Emily Mendoza. Ismael Ibarra. Ethan Lopez. Erica Gonzalez. Daniel Morales. We also have members of the Concert Band here this evening. Gabriela Oliva. Eva Rivera. Stephanie Rodriguez. Jaclyn Marr. Alexis Perez. Dani Cardona. Angie Mendoza. Caleb Trevino. Devon Kano. Marcos de la Cruz. Giovanni Marr. April Almaguer. Did I recognize everybody? Did I miss anyone's names? No? Okay. Parents, if the parents of these students, if they're here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents? And we would also like to recognize their band director, Mr. Rodrigo Liao. All right, thank you very much, students. You may exit this way. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job, great job.
Congratulations.
Breaking away from the norm.
All right, up next, we would like to recognize some of our middle school students. So, how about a big hand as they enter the room? Go ahead and step up.
Oh, there you go.
Right there?
Slide all the way down.
Slide all the way down to here. And then that's... Oh, okay.
All right. So, these are Central Middle School Mighty Puma Band and also B. Garza Eighth Grade Band. We'll start off with Central Middle School, record-breaking, one hundred and twenty-seven Superior Division medals at solo and ensemble contests. Also record-breaking... Also record-breaking, with fifteen members earning a chair in the all-region band. So, as I say your names, students, if you could please wave or step forward so that we can recognize you, okay? All right. We'll start off with Beginner Band, Superior Division, Texas Music Festival, first time in history, student representative Ava Roth. All right, also from Central Middle School, Superior Division, Texas Music Festival, Sweepstakes, Straight Ones at UIL, Superior Division at the Harlogan Music Festival. This is from the Concert Band, and their director is Michael Perez. We'll start off with Jose Carillo. Charlotte Martinez. Darius Castro. Eric Cavassos. Alex Olivares. Victoria Perez. Antonio Mata. Justin Perez. Ariel Cantu. From the Symphonic Band, they received a Superior Division at the Texas Music Festival, Sweepstakes, Straight Ones at UIL, and at the Harlogan Music Festival, they were recognized for their Superior Division, in the Superior Division, I should say. And this is Symphonic Band, once again, from Central Middle School. Their director is Moses Garza. We'll start off with Andrea Perez. Leila Herrera. Janelle Ramirez. Ryan Ibarra. Jamie Villanueva. Kevin Lugo. Aiden Rios. Noah Calderon. Up next, we would like to recognize, up next, we would like to recognize some band members from B. Garza. This is the eighth grade band who received a Division One. So, eighth grade band representatives, we'll start off with Angela Tafoya. Madison Turner. Mario Vallejo. Angel Colon. Larissa Perez. Sofia Hernandez. Ana Sofia Mariscal. Viviana Kano. Would also like to recognize their director, Ernesto Ortiz. So, we have B. Garza Seventh Grade Band, and they won Sweepstakes, and we'd like to recognize some of their representatives here this evening. We'll start off with David Lopez. Roberto Vallejo. Jocelyn Marr. Jose Acuna. Arias Salas. And, did I get everybody here? I think everybody was recognized. And congratulations, once again, B. Garza Seventh Grade Band, Sweepstakes winners. Their director is Deborah Rodriguez. All right, if their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents of these fine students. All right, congratulations. You may exit this way.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations, guys.
And then after, after, after Dr. Jaime, it would be you. Baseball or softball?
Baseball, right?
Yeah. Softball or baseball, I don't know. Because they didn't go in order, so I'm not sure. Because they didn't have, they didn't have the group.
Up next, we would like to recognize some band members from Coyar Middle School and Mary Hoag Middle School. How about a big hand for them as they... What? You guys are not... I'm sorry. We'll correct that in a few minutes. Let's get everybody here. They're already past middle school. They are in Westlaco East Wildcat Regiment. How about a big hand for these students? So, what we have here tonight, Westlaco East High School Ensemble, they received three straight ones from the judges, earned Sweepstakes distinctions. Representing the Westlaco East High School Symphonic Wins Ensemble are... Okay, so as I say your name, if you could please wave or step forward so we can recognize you, okay? All right. We'll start off with the Symphonic Wins Ensemble, Coral Quiroga. Joe Castillo. Omar Garcia. Cruz Gonzalez. Faith Gonzalez. Brandy Guerrero. Vicente Carillo. Adrian Ibanez. Anthony Villanueva. Representing the East Honors Wins Ensemble are Julia Lopez. Alyssa Trevino. Priscilla Caballero. George Castillo. Sarah Hernandez. Logan Perryman. George Cisneros. Gerardo Vasquez. Looks like we got everybody recognized. All right, if your parents are here, if the parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents? All right, once again, congratulations, once again. All right, y'all may exit this way. And as they walk out, we could recognize their band director, Mr. Coyar. Okay. All right, how about a big hand for these middle school band members from Coyar and Mary Hoag? So, we're gonna recognize some of our band members from Coyar Middle School Symphonic Band. So, students, as I say your name, if you could just wave or step forward so that we can recognize you, okay? All right. We'll start off with Miguel Piata. Grace Loyah. Marlene Monte Mayor. Jackie Ramos. Edward de Alba. We also have some Coyar Middle School Concert Band members here. We have Caroline Avila. Armando Castañeda. Giovanni Ortiz. Keyshawn Williams. Benjamin Acevedo. We'd also like to recognize the Coyar Band Director, Olivia Awayo. All right, Mary Hoag Symphonic Band, and we have some representatives here. Gabby Sanchez. Eddie Lopez. Christina Mojica. Mia Garcia. Maddie Castillo. Jose Delmares. We also have Mary Hoag Middle School Concert Band here. Christian, Christian Mojica. I was just correcting the way I said the name. Apologize for that. Naomi Lopez. Evangeline Pompa. Romina Coyar. Devin Reyna. Derek Salinas. All right, did we get everybody recognized here tonight? We did. We need one more. See that I forget somebody's name? We'd also like to recognize Aaron Garcia. Mary Hoag Director is Natalie Sanchez. And also, parents, if the parents are here of these fine students, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents? Thank you very much and congratulations. Y'all can step up this way. Y'all can step up this way. So tonight, we also would like to recognize some of our athletes from West Laco East High School. This is the West Laco East High School Wildcat, Wildcat baseball team. And tonight, we want to recognize the West Laco East High School Wildcats because they won back-to-back district championships this year in 32-5A. And also this year, they claimed the Class 5A by-district championship title. So gentlemen, as I say your name, if you could please step forward so you can be recognized. We'll start off with George Savala. Up next, Javi Garza. Samuel Covarubias. Also part of the team, Margarito Pompa. Brandon Villarreal. Alex Solis. Fabian Trujillo. We also have Edward Villa. Also, we have here tonight, Joseph Perez. We would also like to recognize Jose Rodriguez. Also part of the team, Jesus Ramirez. Jacob Rodriguez. Randy Rodriguez. Also part of the team, Mike Brown Jr. Jesus Grimaldo. Adam Alejandro. Also, we want to recognize tonight, Ryan Escamia. Gabriel Villarreal. Caleb Escamia. Nathan Rivas. And we also want to recognize Antonio Balboa. We'd also like to recognize members of the staff, Coach Carion, Coach Chavez Jr., Coach Chavez Sr., Marcus Bowen, Rick Medina, Jaime Castaneda Assistant, and the head coach, Mike Brown. Parents, if you're here, parents, can you please stand and be recognized? Our parents. All right, once again, congratulations, and we'll see you guys next year, right? All right. All right, now we have members of the Lady Wildcats softball team. So tonight, we want to congratulate the West Laco East High School Lady Cats for bringing home the softball 32-5A co-district championship. Also, these young ladies captured a Class 5A by-district championship. How about a big hand for them? And so, young ladies, as I say your name, if you please step forward so we can recognize you, okay? Team members are, we'll start off with Jay-Z Casares. We'd also like to congratulate Melissa Cabrera. Jaylin Figaroa. Ariel Lopez. Dion Lopez. Michaela Peralles. Alady Lopez. Magali Larga. Ambrosia Peña. Ariana Cabrera. Jessica Salazar. Elvira Perez. Desiree Herrera. Angie Herrera. And we'd also like to recognize Cecilia Bautista. Managers are Alejandra Lopez, Daphne Valero, Angela Álvarez. And let's recognize the coaching staff. We have Sheila Guerrero, Mario Castillo, Jessica Ferrer, Adrian Gómez, Fernando Bautista, Lisandra Cavazos, and the head coach, Victoria Vasquez. And let's also recognize their parents for being here. Parents, please stand and be recognized. All right, ladies, congratulations on a great season. You may exit this way.
Congratulations, ladies.
Okay. All right. Now we're going to recognize some more athletes who received state academic honors. How about a big hand as they enter the room? All right, looks like we don't have everybody here tonight, but we're going to recognize, we're going to go ahead and say their name or read those individuals who won state awards academically, and of course, our students who are here tonight. So we want to congratulate several high school athletes who were recently named on the all-academic and all-state academic teams for their academic excellence. Coaches' Associations for Basketball, Girls Basketball, Soccer, and the Texas High School Coaches' Association awarded our students with these distinctions. From West Laco East High School, and students, as I say your name, if you could please step forward so we can recognize you, okay? From West Laco East High School in Girls Basketball, receiving all-academic team honors are Elizabeth Carranza. Julie Mojica. They're back there? Okay. All right. Are y'all from West... Okay, well, let's bring them all out at the same time. I'm sorry, apologize. Yeah. Go ahead and come on in. Anybody with academic recognition, just go ahead and come on out. We're going to name all you guys together. All right, we'll get the green card next. All right. All right, so once again, let's have a big hand for all our academic athletes. All right, so students, as I say your name, if you please step forward so you can be recognized. All right. So we'll start off from West Laco East High School in Girls Basketball, receiving all-academic team honors, Elizabeth Carranza. All right. Jolie Mojica. Abigail Cabrera. And their head coach is Chris Cromer. All right, we have Boys Basketball from West Laco East. Academic team honors go to Charles Cromer. Not here. Joshua Contreras. And their head coach is Zeke Rodriguez. In Boys Soccer, receiving all-academic team honors, Eric Munoz. And Angel Salceda. Head coach for the Boys Soccer Team at West Laco East is Robbie Contreras. Making the Academic All-State Second Team in Girls Soccer, we have Victoria Sustaita. Proud mom. Galelia Martinez. And Hannah Zuniga. Head coach is Rolando Ramos. From West Laco High School in Girls Basketball, receiving academic all-team honors, academic team honors are Maleni Carion. Alexa Davila. Destiny Ramos. Anna Vella. Kennedy Vialpando. And their head coach is Griselda Fino. In Boys Basketball, earning academic all-state honors, we have Nick Avila. Making the Academic All-State First Team, Leonard Smith. And their head coach is Gabe Valdez. Moving on to Boys Soccer, earning academic all-state honorable mention, Marcos Limón. Making the Academic All-State Second Team, Juan Cruz. We also have Academic Second Team, Jose Arande. And that's Andrade, apologize for that. And their head coach is Eric Samora. In Girls Soccer, making the Academic All-State Second Team, Chantel Luna. Isabella Montano. And Abigail Reyna. Their head coach is Eloy Gonzalez. We would also like to recognize the parents of these students. If they're here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents? And once again, congratulations, great job, everybody. Y'all may exit this way.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We have a few more recognitions and awards. This is the time of the year, especially in the spring, where we just have a lot of awards, and we have a lot of winners here at West Laco ISD, and these are members of the Green Card Team. How about a big hand for them as they enter the room? They're representing...
The green card.
Can you hear me? The Green Card Team, yes, and they're representing West Laco ISD. They're from both West Laco High School and West Laco East High School. So tonight, we want to congratulate the CTE Electronic Car Racing Team for their outstanding results. This group won three first-place awards and advanced to the National 2022 F-24 Advanced Green Power USA Custom Division. After overcoming equipment failure, COVID cancellations, and a wreck, the team placed the number 44 race car fourth at Nationals. Congratulations. So representing both West Laco High School and West Laco East High School, members of the West Laco Green Power Electric Car Race Team are, and as I say your name, if you could please step forward so that we can recognize you, okay? We'll start off with Ray Leal. Alfredo Trevino. Spencer Ramirez. Jonathan Hernandez. Luis Gómez. Miguel Chavez. Rigo Cerda. Conrad Rodriguez. And I think I got everybody. We'd like to recognize their team coach, Carlos Perez. And if their parents are here, parents, can you please stand and be recognized? Parents? All right, once again, congratulations. Y'all may exit this way.
Congratulations.
Okay, this is our last group of students. How about a big hand for some of our students here as they enter the room? So tonight, we have members here from different organizations, such as Skills USA and BPA. And we want to congratulate several high school students who were extremely successful in several CTE programs. These students qualified for state competition and placed in the top 10. Representing Skills USA, so students, let me just tell you guys, as I say your name, if you could please step forward so you can be recognized, okay? Placing fifth at the Digital Cinema Production State Contest, we have Ambrose Balderas. Sarah Rodriguez. We also have Ayana Siller. And their sponsor is Gabriel Cruz. Up next, we have someone who won third place at the State Telecommunications Cabling Event, and we'd like to recognize Joaquín Barón. And their sponsor is Mr. Mario Palacios. Winning first place in the Employment Application Process Event and qualified for Nationals, Juan Tamez. We'd also like to recognize their sponsor, Oscar García. From BPA, winning first place in the Advanced Interviewing Skills State Event and advanced to Nationals, Jada Moreno. We would also like to recognize winning fourth place at the State Leadership Conference in FCC LA, Lily Ford. Representing HOSA, placing seventh out of 25 in the state, we have Analia Flores. All right, we recognize everybody. I would also like to recognize the...
Their sponsors. Carlos?
Yes.
Their sponsors.
I think I recognize... Oh, the sponsors for Maggie Ramirez for HOSA. Also sponsor for FCC LA, Mary Martin. And the BPA sponsor, Veronica Galván. All right, thank you very much, and you may exit this way. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The most important part, how about the parents? Could they please stand and be recognized? The most important part. How about the parents? Could they please stand here right there? Thank you very much.
Item six, proclamations.
There are none.
There are none. Okay, it takes item seven, public comments.
There are eight. Just give me two minutes. I'm going to connect the first one virtually and the rest will be in person.
No. They were going to connect whoever was going to do public comments, eight of them. But this one's going to be virtual and the other seven, I guess, are here.
Mr. Guerra, you can start. Yes, good evening, Dr. Coronado, President Flayar, and Westlaco ISD School Board members. My name is Luciano... Yes?
Before we start, I need to read a script. And then you'll have the floor.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, identify yourself and give your address.
Luciano Guerra. I live at 1008 Country Club Drive in Mission, Texas.
Okay, Mr. Guerra. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, the Board of Trustees may not deliberate on any comment made by a member of the public on a subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of this meeting. As per the Texas Attorney General, the scope of board discussions for a subject not part of the meeting agenda is limited to only a proposal by a board member to place on the subject on a future board agenda. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. But the board shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board, unless recognized by the presiding officer. No public comment presentation shall exceed five minutes. Any disruptive behavior by any speaker may result in the speaker's removal from participation in the meeting. Please be mindful of using names or personally identifiable information as there is no immunity from defamatory comments while participating in public comments. Okay, sir, you may now have the floor.
Okay, yes, my name is Luciano Guerra. I'm the sports editor for the Progress Times newspaper in Mission, Texas. We are a local weekly paper that covers mostly Mission, La Jolla, and Cherryland High School teams. I've been a photographer and a sportswriter for the Progress Times for about ten years now. And in that time, I have never, ever been refused admittance to a high school sports venue or asked to leave a dugout, as I was on May sixth at Westlaco High School, when I was covering the La Jolla Coyotes versus Westlaco Panthers by-district baseball game. I was in the La Jolla Coyotes dugout. I know the Coyotes coaches very well. I know Victor Garza, the director. They had no problem with me being in the dugout at that game. As a photographer, I was there to shoot photos of the Coyotes, but of course also of the Panthers, for the Progress Times newspaper. I was informed partway through the game that I had to leave the dugout because the Westlaco High coaches, or one of the coaches, I'm not sure who, I wasn't given a name, was asked to have me leave the dugout by an umpire. I showed the umpire my credentials. I have a Texas Press Association press pass. I was also wearing a vest that said Progress Times newspaper on the back. It was very easily visible, and I showed it to the umpire. He said, "Doesn't matter. You have to leave the dugout." I didn't know exactly what was going on. So I left. I didn't want to make any kind of scene or anything. I did leave. And later, I was told that this is not the first time this kind of thing has happened to members of the media. I have spoken with Delsia Lopez, who is a photographer for the Monitor. And here is something she posted on my Facebook page. That coach has an issue with us too, talking about the Monitor. That's why we don't go there anymore. It's a shame because it's about the kids/players getting the coverage, not about an adult coach. Westlaco ISD administration should be contacted. We've been denied access and, when granted, given grief about being there to cover games. Reason: We no longer cover with photos any longer. So this is something that hasn't just happened to me. Apparently, it's happened to other members of the media. Now, then later, Delsia Lopez sent me another text saying that she was mistaken. It was a Westlaco High School softball coach, not baseball, that had given them problems. So apparently, it's not just the baseball coach who gave me problems, but also the softball coach has given the Monitor problems. Now, Delsia Lopez spoke to Henry Miller, who's her sports editor. And they have contacted the UIL to see if any of this is in violation of UIL rules. They have not heard back from the UIL yet on this matter, but we are waiting to see what the UIL says about this. So I am doing this to make you all aware of this situation that apparently your baseball, Westlaco High, baseball, and softball coaches do not want media at covering high school softball or high school baseball. I don't know why. I just watched online, saw all these great student athletes be recognized for their accomplishments. That's part of our job, is to make sure that these students receive recognition through photos and through interviews and through stories about them. That's the job we're trying to do, but apparently, this is not something that some of the coaches at Westlaco High School are allowing us to do. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Carlos, are we going to follow this list? Are we going to follow this first and then the person in your life? Ismael Guerra. State your name and address.
My name is Ismael Guerra. I live at 2904 Rose One Drive in Westlaco, Texas.
Okay, Ismael. I don't have to recite the whole thing again? Yes. We have a five-minute time limit. And I think in prior meetings, we recite that one time and that's it. So you're aware of the time limit, so you now have the floor.
Good afternoon, Dr. Coronado and members of Westlaco ISD. My name is Ismael Guerra Jr. I'm a student at the Westlaco High School and part of the Mariachi Pantera. I find it unfair that my director will be losing her job after this school year. She was the one to help everybody in the Mariachi group about their decisions and everything else. She was the one to help me learn and pick up playing the violin quickly. She did help us go to state and compete two years in a row, which is a very difficult task. Ms. Bravo is not only a director, but is also like a parental figure in a way that she gets things out of her way to help the group in whatever we need. She'll do anything for us and rearrange things no matter the circumstances. Ms. Bravo has always encouraged us and pushed us to do our best, not only the Mariachi group, but in general. We have been told that the reason for Ms. Bravo's termination was because of a student impaired made multiple reports to central office. I myself have made complaints to a principal and a band director, but now that I look at it, I see that Mariachi is not only a group for fun, but is a discipline as well. And there was a reason I was getting in trouble for the things I did wrong. Not to mention, she has multiple challenges as well as a teacher, teaching students in three different schools. It is disappointing and sad that Ms. Bravo was preparing us all year to go to the Mariachi workshop, and she wasn't allowed to go. Also, our end-of-year Mariachi performance was canceled and took a very long time to find answers on why it was canceled. This has and still is affecting us Mariachi students, not only mentally, but emotionally as well. Ms. Bravo has a passion for not only herself, but for touching the lives of students she sees every day. No matter what happens, I can say Ms. Bravo has a heart for her students. Thank you for hearing me out. I hope you guys take this into consideration about keeping her here for the next school year and more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alan Olivares. State your name and address, please.
Alan Olivares. I live at 513 Orchard Court, Westlaco, Texas.
Okay, you have five minutes. You have the floor.
Thank you. Greetings, Dr. Coronado and members of the school board. My name is Alan Olivares. I am a junior at Westlaco High School, and I have been a member of Mariachi Pantera since the beginning of this school year. I am here to speak to you today in regards to my Mariachi director, Mrs. Emily Bravo. When we finally returned to in-person school this school year, I decided to try the Mariachi program. Knowing it would be difficult coming in as a first-year Mariachi student, I did have fear inside of me. What if I wasn't accepted? What if I wasn't good enough? However, at my first rehearsal with the Mariachi, I was welcomed with open arms by Mrs. Bravo. She knew my situation and continuously assured me that we all start somewhere and that we were all there to learn and grow as not only musicians, but as individuals. Being a violin player herself, Mrs. Bravo has always given me tips and advice on how to better my playing. She has always wanted for my skill to improve for the benefit of the group. She has since the beginning of the school year ingrained in our minds that Mariachi is a discipline. It is not just a program to be in for fun. There is dedication, respect, and discipline that must be present in every student in order for us to succeed. She has always stressed the importance of teamwork and perseverance despite the challenges we may face. You see, Mrs. Bravo is more than a teacher. She is a mentor. She has allowed us to grow as musicians, but also as people. She has taught me to never give up, to always try my best, and to try new things even when I may be afraid to. Since the beginning of the school year, Mrs. Bravo has been pushing all of us to do our best in order to earn a Division One rating at the UIL Area Mariachi Ensemble Contest so that we may advance to the state level. Under her leadership, guidance, and dedication to her students, we were able to earn our ticket to the state UIL Mariachi Contest. I recall that the day of the area contest, all of us had more nerves than we knew what to do with. We wanted to not only advance to state for ourselves, but for Ms. Bravo, because as her students, we have seen all the work, time, effort, and passion she has put into our group. We have seen her encounter many challenges, especially because she is only one director for three schools. However, she always made the time to prepare us for our contest. On that day, after our performance, we had finally seen that all the hard work had paid off. We had earned our ticket to state. All the long practices, all the extra time we put in at home, it was all worth it. A good teacher is like a candle. It consumes itself to light the way for others. This quote perfectly describes the kind of educator Mrs. Bravo is. She will give up her time and energy for the benefit of her students. All year long, she has pushed and pushed and has never made it feel like she doesn't care, or as if we aren't good enough to work on. On the contrary, she has truly embodied what it means to be a teacher who goes above and beyond for her students. If our group needs extra practice time, she will stay for us. If our trajes don't fit us properly and she needs to sew them on the bus the entire trip to our UIL state contest, she will. If we have a performance early in the morning and we don't have time to eat, she is going to bring us breakfast. If we need to practice on a Saturday morning, Mrs. Bravo will drive to Westlaco from where she lives, which I will add is an hour away, leaving behind her two young kids and husband. And all of these instances, if you haven't noticed by how specific they are, have all occurred. Mrs. Emily Bravo is always willing to do the absolute most that she can for all of her students, and she always has. Very few teachers in today's atmosphere and education would do what she does. And that is what sets her apart from the rest. She is here because she wants us to learn and she wants us to grow. She has always said that our generation is going to be the generation that will carry on the Mariachi tradition. She tells us that we are the ones who will never let it die out, that the future of our culture is in our hands. Mrs. Bravo not only has a passion for what she does, but she has a passion for touching the lives of the students she sees every day. She has a passion for Mariachi. She has a passion for her students. And this passion is what has allowed her to take such huge strides in the Mariachi program in the district. The Mariachi program would not have gotten as far as it has if not for her leadership and guidance. At the very center of Mrs. Bravo is the most important thing that a teacher should have. What Mrs. Bravo has is love. Mrs. Bravo loves her students. I can say with complete certainty, with one hundred percent confidence, that every single time I step into the classroom, I feel the love she has for us. Through the advice she gives inside and out of the classroom, we can feel how much she cares about us. We feel her love. In closing, I feel confident you have a sense of my Mariachi director's character. It is at this time that I ask that you reconsider allowing Mrs. Bravo, who is always going above and beyond for her students, and who is always looking out for the best interest of her students, and who has been preparing us for so many things throughout the school year, to return next school year and beyond. This quote, "A leadership is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way," end of quote, epitomizes the true character of Mrs. Emily Bravo. I pray that you make the right choice and indeed show us the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriela Oliva. Name and address.
I'm Gabriela Oliva. My address is 101 South Sinclair, Westlaco, Texas.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Ms. Bravo has been a really great teacher, and it just breaks my heart to see her losing her job over... Well, I don't know, just losing her job. She has encouraged me personally to stay in Mariachi. When I first started, I didn't want to stay because I am a flute. And many people say flutes don't belong in Mariachi. And instead of telling me that, you know, that I shouldn't be there, she encouraged me to stay and said I had so much potential and look at me now. I've sang the songs for both times we went to state with her. Through her guidance, we've done so much. She's done nothing but support and encourage everyone in our Mariachi. And she isn't only there for just to teach, but she's been there to talk to and just... You can tell she loves us, each and every one of us, and she... She led us to state with very little support and funding. And in only her second and third year of teaching in general, she was able to do that. Not many people could. It's pretty amazing to me. She got many students out of their comfort zones so they could sing and play with more confidence. Last year, only around three people sang, maybe a little bit more. And now, almost the whole Mariachi sings, including the two that talked. They wouldn't sing before, but now she encouraged them to step out of their comfort zone. And they have their own songs now, and it's just really great. And she doesn't just give songs out, she makes it equal. With every song, she has an audition. We have to audition for it. And if you don't show up for that audition, well, then you can't get the song. And she makes sure it's very fair. And many people said, or some people said before, that she uses favoritism. But I don't believe that because I... I, a lot of people want what they want and just like without putting in work. Me personally, I think I put in a lot of work. I stay after school every day, or I would when we were getting ready for state. And that's why I sang the songs. If they want to be on the top, they should put in the work. And the majority of the mariachi really loves her and really wants her there. And I say that we should stick with the majority because if one person doesn't like her, if two people don't like her, then maybe those two people are the problem. Or that one person is the problem. It's not Ms. Bravo because she's been nothing but amazing to us. And I love her. I love her like a second mom. No, but she's, she's just that great that I, I just can't imagine my senior year next year without her. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Garza?
Hi, everybody, I'm back again.
Okay. Your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Diana Garza. 1011 East 10th Street, Mercedes.
You have five minutes.
My phone number, do I need to give it out? Because I know before we had to know?
No.
Okay, anyway, you know what? Well, before I start, um, these young children, I, that's not part of what I needed to say, right? And it breaks my heart because from my understanding, each one of you, listen closely. This young educator with three years in that took that mariachi to state was threatened with a non-renewal. And it makes me pretty sad because I've been there. Guess what? Because I'm older and I know how snakes work, I chose, you do what you have to, but I'm not resigning. This poor lady, out of, out of, she was, she was timid, didn't know any better, is young, she doesn't know how things work yet. But she went ahead and put her letter in to resign. So I hope each one of you that are sitting there, four children, as you all claim, do the right thing and let her resent her letter of resignation because she was threatened and she knew, she didn't know any better. So she did what she thought she had to do. So, anyway, with that being said, I trust that you're gonna do the right thing. So let me go on with, okay, well, good evening, school board trustees and Dr. Coronado. Uh, and parents that are out there watching and students. Dr. Coronado, first and foremost, I would like to thank you for serving our country for 22 years. I appreciate that. And welcome to Weslaco ISD, all right? I have faith that after three superintendents in one school year, you're gonna do the right thing and move the district forward. I truly have faith. With that being said, uh, I was here on February 15th, and I would like to comment on a statement that Mr. Nieto made when he voted not to compensate me for time that I had lost due to a bullying issue at my campus that affected me where I couldn't go work anymore. And he stated that in order to go to work, I mean, in order to get a paycheck, we need to, we need to work, right? All right. So with that being said, uh, I wasn't accommodated. I wanted to work, but I wasn't accommodated for obvious reasons because it's me. Okay, so here in my file, I have a voluntary surrender teaching certificate of an educator who was on paid leave for a year, okay, for an inappropriate relationship with a student. That person, because of relation to some of you sitting on the board, it's my understanding, uh, was paid for a whole year, okay? So, yes, why was he getting paid without going to work, Mr. Nieto? And I, I, I don't know what took so long because obviously there was some truth to that, to that allegation because here I have, I have the certificate where that person surrendered his certificate, right? I hope that charges were filed and I hope that Weslaco PD did not give that parent the runaround, but it's my understanding to this day that they gave that parent the runaround as they did with the assault of that poor child, that special ed child that happened the first semester, where it wasn't until, Mr. Trevino, publicly, I want to thank you for going out there on Channel 5 and asking and demanding what's taking so long. So on behalf of all students in this district, Mr. Trevino and myself, I truly thank you for being in that seat that you're loaned as. Mister De Los Santos said in some comments that I'm gonna get to later, it's loaned to each one of you, okay? And it's loaned to you, as he stated, uh, it's loaned to you by the students of this district that are here. It's loaned to you by the parents in the community. It's loaned to you. You don't own that seat, okay? So again, I'm going to repeat, I hope you do the right thing as these young children are asking you to do. Uh, okay, so with that being said, um, do not forget, every one of you was elected by the community to be the voice of every single boy and girl in this district. Which brings me to other points I want to make. There are four of you sitting up there that also voted not to suspend, uh, our former superintendent, Dr. Canales, during the audit. Some of you claimed that everything was great under her leadership. The following or some of the comments some of you made at that meeting where you voted not to suspend her. Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Dr. Canales has been doing a great job leading our district.
Yes.
No, but, but, but these are public. It's public. Okay, all right, it's public. For y'all that are watching out there, go to the meeting that was held on, uh, let me, let me see, so the people can go see the comments that you all made. I have it here.
Ms. Garza, you have reached the five minutes.
I, you didn't give me the warning. Can I, weren't we supposed to get a two-minute warning?
Thank you.
No.
Can we?
Yeah, five minutes. Yeah, five, five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yep.
Okay, well, I should have been given the two-minute warning, I thought. But anyway, thank you so much. And I know that come election time, all the parents and people watching are gonna do the right thing and vote for the people that are there for the right reasons, which are students. Because after the finding of the audit, obviously, a lot of you aren't there for the right reasons. Thank you. God bless Weslaco ISD.
Thank you. Julie Valdez? State your name and address, please.
My name is Julianne Valdez and my address is 1103 Stone Street, Weslaco, Texas.
You have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Julianne Valdez and I'm here to comment on two different issues, but I think I probably just gonna have time for one. And that one is the selection process for the summer school assignments. I've been employed for the district for 10 years. First at the sub and now as a teacher for like eight years. And this year was really disappointing, and that's to say the least. Um, my complaint is, or my concern, because it's a concern that I have, is that what was the criteria for the selection of teachers? What was, if there was criteria, was that criteria followed? Were the evaluations? Because I find it very disheartening that not only me, but I wasn't selected. But I don't want people out there thinking, oh, she has, you know, a gripe or she has a chip on her shoulder because she didn't get selected. I could deal with rejection. I'm 38 years old. That's not the issue here. The issue here is the person in charge of that selection process. The, the issue here was, um, the credibility of that person due to the way that person was chosen, due to the way that person was actually hired for their job. And I'll refer you to page 38 of the, um, was the, that report, the, going, yeah, the audit, the forensic audit, thank you, um, the tidwol report. I'll refer to that, page 38. And you could see who was in that committee. Going back to the summer assignments, there's little confidence that that thing was done fairly and justly. If it was a committee, that committee was, if it was made up of admin at the campus where I work at, that committee was made by, that committee must have been made by individuals who had no issue in selecting me to do what you, what other, what other teachers would say is, um, tedious work. It's part of our work assignment, just like, um, Dr. Coronado, you mentioned, like paying a certain amount, you know? We do these tasks, these extra duties, these other duties as assigned. You know, it's part, it's part of our salary. It's in there. But the thing is, when the same individuals are repeatedly chosen time and time again to do the same tasks that other people shy away from, I was, it was very quickly to choose me among other administrators. And it is across, I believe I've gotten complaints across, you know, different campuses, that we were utilized for those other duties as assigned. And we were utilized for the burdensome, burdensome tasks. But when it came time, we were, when it came time for summer assignment selection, all of a sudden, we weren't considered. We weren't, we weren't chosen. We weren't there. Just like they, those people, those admin, had the same consideration or the same consideration to volunteer me or to choose me or choose other, other educators to test, to do these, um, other, other duties as assigned. They should have been so quick as to have the same consideration for the summer assignments. Um, so my, what I want, or what I came here for, I urge you, Dr. Coronado, to actually go into the different campuses and ask what were the criteria? Was the criteria followed? And what was it that, you know, what was it that other people, you know, how was it that other people that are questionable, that were questionably chosen, questionable decision-making over others? And I'll just give you one example right now. There is an educator who was chosen for a summer assignment, who didn't even apply for the summer assignment. And I did. And same department. And, um, and other, and other people from the same department, how was it that that admin, that educator was chosen? And I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. I'm just saying that there is inconsistencies. Either, you know, there's inconsistencies and I want, that's what, and cross campuses, not just where I work. And I'm not gonna say for obvious reasons which campus I work in. But, you know, I just want you to look into that, you know, and to follow through with that. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, I don't know if I have enough time, but, um, was the tidwol report and the Weaver report. And what I find on page 38 is that what were the ramifications for people who actually sat in the committee and corrupted the hiring process? What were the actual outcomes for those people? Those people, and I looked at every single name, actually either got, faced no consequence or got promoted. Look at the list, they're all people promoted. One after the whole report comes out, after the whole report came out. There was no consequences whatsoever. I don't advocate the firing of anybody. Um, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is there needs to-
Ms. Garza, you have reached the five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Esmeralda Oliva?
Hello. Uh, my name is Esmeralda Oliva and my address is 101 South Sinclair Avenue, Weslaco, Texas. And I am, okay, I am here to support my daughter and her classmates, her peers that are in the mariachi pantera. It is my understanding that, um, Ms. Bravo resigned, but from what I've seen and the way, you know, she took time off from work when she never missed. My daughter was calling me that day that they had that, uh, thing in Bronzeville. Mom, there's something wrong. Call her, maybe something happened to her. She never misses anything. She's always here for us. She is one of the few dedicated teachers that I've seen that teach from the heart. She is here on Fridays till 6:30, 7:00 PM on, you know, if she needs to be for her students to practice so that they can be ready and make it to state. Now, I'm sorry if I sound offensive. My husband says when I'm passionate about something, I tend to offend people, and that is not my intention. I thank you for your time. But I've heard rumors that Weslaco has been trying to do away with the mariachi program. Now, and the reason that kind of, to me now, it's kind of like, this was before my daughter was in mariachi. But Ms. Bravo came in as the first-year teacher. Her second-year teacher, during COVID, she took the mariachi to state. Her third year, which is this year, she took him to state again. Did she exceed y'all's expectations? Because the mariachi doesn't have a classroom. They don't have their own budget. Yet, whenever there's luncheons for teachers, you know, for counselors, for anything, even here at central office, you know, who do y'all call for entertainment? You don't call the football team. You don't call the basketball team. You don't call the band. You don't call orchestra. You call the mariachi. Yet, why aren't you listening to the mariachi? You know, I ask you to please open your hearts and listen to the students of Weslaco. You know, this is something that I've seen firsthand. My husband and I go to every performance that mariachi has. It doesn't matter where it's at. And when they were attending at STC, they had, they were invited to play for their quince años. I saw students that had never sung before and that I've known because they attend my church. They had never sung before, ever. But yet, they were, they got the courage thanks to the confidence that Ms. Bravo gave them to get, get up there and sing. And they did amazing. And these are kids that I've known since they were little and they never sang. But she got them to do that. She got them out of the comfort zone. And I understand that, yes, she resigned, but I felt like she resigned because she was scared. You know, she's only been teaching for three years. She doesn't know everything. And, but I do know that she did ask, you know, apply again to be reinstated. And I really pray that you guys reinstate her. There's very few teachers that teach from the heart. There's very few teachers that care for their students. And what breaks my heart is those are the teachers that I see the district's losing. And I don't think that is fair to our students. And I, I really hope that you consider, you know, bringing her back, not just for next year, for, you know, for the following years. She's done good for Weslaco. And if it's really true that you don't want to get rid of the mariachi program, why is it that when they get the attention, there's a new director coming in? When they make it to state? I ask you to please reconsider and please listen to the majority of students. You know, if you have a fruit and there's one rotten apple in there, you don't throw away all the fruit. And because of one student or two that are complaining, that is not the majority. You have over 20 kids just in the mariachi varsity. And because of one student, it is not fair to the other 19. And I'm just talking about them. I'm not even considering the JV and the other schools that she goes to. So I ask you to please, you know, reinstate her. She is an awesome teacher and it would be a great loss to Weslaco and to our students. And my kids, my daughter has been through a lot. She was pulled out of class without my permission, without my husband and I being there by two individuals from this district to question her about her teacher. And I don't think that was fair to her. And, and they brought in consultants for state. And one of the consultants, and this are the kind of teachers that I see a red flag, told my daughter to keep a secret. And it might not have been a bad secret, but it was a secret nonetheless. She apparently showed my daughter's recording to somebody from a university. And that person said that my daughter, if she wanted into the university, didn't even have to audition, that she was automatically in. And then she said, but don't tell anybody because you'll hurt the others. I'm sorry, but a teacher that promotes secrets, it's not a teacher that should be teaching. And I've never had a bad feeling about Ms. Bravo. Ms. Bravo has never done anything to question, you know, have a question or anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And we now have, uh, Angelica Cardosa? State your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Angelica Cardosa and my address is at 513 Orchard Court here in Weslaco.
Okay, you have five minutes, ma'am.
Greetings, Dr. Coronado and members of the board. First of all, welcome, Dr. Coronado, to Westlaco ISD. As a longtime member of Westlaco and a product of Westlaco ISD, I am hopeful that with your leadership, this district will flourish once again. The past two years have been challenging for students, school staff, and families, and everyone has been affected in different ways. For our family, we lost a loved one to COVID at the beginning of the pandemic. Needless to say, our lives were turned upside down and we're facing many challenging issues. Our son, Alan, a very outgoing, intelligent, and well-rounded student, was now dealing with emotional issues that were affecting his health, his grades, his friendships, among other issues. When Westlaco ISD announced that, that students would be coming back to school in person, we were, we were hopeful that some sense of normalcy would return. Our son Alan told us that he was going to join mariachi. We were excited for him as he loves music and we prayed that this would help him feel a sense of belonging and assist him in recovering from the tumultuous year we had been through. As the school year began and progressed, it was evident that my son was growing exponentially in his knowledge of the violin. Seeing my son on stage representing our Mexican culture while showcasing his musical talent made me very proud. His, his success would not have been possible if not for his perseverance and for the guidance he has received from his mariachi director, Ms. Emily Bravo. Mrs. Bravo's expertise allowed for her to discover a hidden talent that my son had. I was in complete amazement when I attended one of the mariachi panteras' many performances and saw and heard my son singing a song for the first time. If it wasn't for Mrs. Bravo's encouragement and teaching, we would have never known that my son could sing, and in Spanish. Under Mrs. Bravo's direction, the ensemble received superior ratings at the Area UIL mariachi contest, earning them a bid for the state contest. It was a true testament to the hard work that the students and their director had put into their craft. At the state contest, the students and Mrs. Bravo gave it their all. They were not discouraged by the fact that they were going up against multiple consolidated award-winning groups from throughout the state. It is evident that Mrs. Bravo had not only taught them the art of music, but had prepared them to face the world and to keep their head up high. Now, as the school year is ending, we have been looking forward to their final performance at their spring concert. However, I am in complete dismay to know that Mrs. Bravo is not returning next year. In a matter of just a few days, our son has become emotionally distressed and is torn about next year without his director. After a successful year, it is disheartening to know that my son is no longer looking forward to it. The past few weeks have been difficult for us and we have been having dialogue with him about the importance of finishing the year strong. Unfortunately, this is not a conversation that we should be having when we had made strides forward during this school year. As parents and community stakeholders, we expect the district to provide clarity on the mariachi program, provide a safe learning environment for mariachi children, provide a qualified director who is there for the students, or even two directors, so that we can match the other groups. We demand transparency on actions by the administrators and other staff when they came to questioning our students. Our mariachi children deserve to finish this year exactly how they started, with a sense of belonging, full of hopes and dreams for the future, and a sense of normalcy. Please do not take this away from them. They deserve better from Westlaco ISD and their administrators. And without, and since I was here earlier for the workshop, I am going to mention another thing. I heard you speaking about athletics stipends and I heard you speaking about academic stipend, but I did not hear a single word about the fine arts stipends, so that we can attract the best, just like you want to do with athletics. The fine arts have helped increase enrollment at Westlaco ISD, and I know that that is one of our goals. So let's support the fine arts. Thank you.
Okay, item eight, superintendent's report, Dr. Coronado.
Board President and members of the board, uh, I, before I get to my COVID-19 updates and enrollment, uh, I do want to announce, uh, for those that are here, that I will be having the, the meet and greet, the town hall meeting, um, tomorrow at six PM at the PAC, at the Performing Arts Center. Uh, so I prepared, uh, probably a thirty-minute discussion about who I am as a person, as a man, as an educator, and as a veteran. So I invite, uh, the public, um, and all of you to, um, get to know, I guess, me a little bit more. You've gotten to know me here the last six weeks since I've been here. And, uh, and, and understand that, that I have a kid-first mentality, uh, and, uh, I, uh, I, I, I will fight for, for what's right, so. Uh, but again, at six o'clock tomorrow, uh, I, I look forward to, to meeting as many people as I possibly can. Uh, getting to my superintendent report, COVID-19 updates. Uh, it's, it's pretty stable. We're actually low, um, in the valley. Um, we, we've actually done well. Carlos, you can just go ahead and go through, if there's any. And, uh, we can stop if you have any questions. You can go back to that slide, please? As you can see, um, we, we're actually, uh, pretty low considering the size of the district. This is what we've spent so far on, on the nursing side, based on a grant that we received. Um, so we still have a little over one point two million dollars, so we've only spent twenty-eight percent. Uh, we do have some PCR tests available, uh, but they're set to expire here on June sixth. Our enrollment side, uh, it, it's pretty stable right now, probably plus or minus, um, twenty students at, at a time. Um, we, we anticipate, uh, a lot of growth. We've, I think we have three sixty-seven, uh, so far enrolled in our pre-K three program. Um, so that's, that's not too bad. Um, and I think we're going to make a bigger push. We talked about this morning, uh, getting out to, um, Little League camps and HEB and, uh, all the other venues that are out here. We really control about ninety percent of the market, so we probably need to expand just a little bit more, uh, with, with where we're at.
Question, sir?
Yes.
On the pre-K three program, and I know it's a full day, but for parents, when is the, when is the end time for the dismissal, I guess, for pre-K three? The dismissal time at the end of the day?
So I believe it's, it's the regular three forty-five? Three forty-five.
All right.
Uh, yes. And, and we still have sites outside of Westlaco ISD. We still have two in Donna and one in, uh-
Brugatol.
Uh, Brugatol, yes. And all, all ten campuses will have pre-K three.
Yeah, so we're still working on those adjustments because we moved the time, so start releasing about three forty-five, but it'll be put out when, no, three forty-five.
Okay, perfect.
It's our average daily attendance. Again, we're creeping back up. We have a, a pretty aggressive, uh, uh, method to, uh, to, I guess, uh, attack our chronic absenteeism, um, and, and that'll, you'll see that start roll out here probably in the summertime. Um, just real quick, I know this is a, an agenda item here, but I wanted, I wanted you to see the surveys. Um, this is our, uh, this is what we received from our employees that have Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Again, uh, roughly about eighty-two percent, uh, agree with the coverage they're getting for Blue Cross, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Our dental, again, about the same. And then our pharmacy, um, is about the same. A little, little low for the pharmacy, and, and we can discuss that, um, during the discussion item. So, uh, again, subject to your questions, uh, we did receive preliminary star score results for, um, the EOCs, and I'll, I'll send that to you, uh, first thing in the morning. Subject to your questions?
No, sir.
Item nine, consent agenda. Take a little time to look over the lengthy consent agenda. Then I'll ask to see if any of you want to pull anything. Be good? Wait.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mister Nieto?
None.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Yes, I'd like to pull item N one.
N one. Costa Viño?
None.
Doctor Rodriguez?
I have none.
Doctor Santos?
I have none, sir.
Mister Gonzalez?
I have none.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion?
To approve the consent agenda, except item N one.
Second.
If we have a motion by Mister Gonzalez and a second by Mister Dos Santos, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of N one. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your consent by saying aye or no if you don't approve. Mister Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Costa Viño?
Aye.
Doctor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mister Dos Santos?
Aye.
And Mister Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mrs. Sustaita, item N one.
Yes, uh, Mr. Coyar, the reason why I pulled this item out, uh, it's about backpacks and supplies. And I think that's great that the migrant program is wanting to, uh, use funds for the migrants to use backpacks and supplies. And so I was thinking, um, I know that I've seen other districts, uh, this is just an idea for us, um, and I was speaking to Dr. Coronado about this. Maybe if our school, our district, uh, has the funds, which hopefully I think they are available, we could provide supplies for all the students, not just migrant students, but all students. Uh, you know, like Dr. Coronado said, inflation is at an all-time high since nineteen eighty-one. We're still trying to recover from pandemic. Everybody's needing, no matter if you're economically disadvantaged or not, it would be a great help to all the parents if we could cover the supplies going back to school for the kids. Um, I know other several, I not, not several, but I know one other district here in the valley is doing it, and this would just be a huge help. Uh, so I did speak to Dr. Coronado and he will look into it a little bit better, but, uh, I would really appreciate, and I know the parents and the community would really appreciate if we could cover the supplies going back to school for all the kids. And that's why I pulled it out.
We could take care of that.
Yeah, so I don't know if we, if we'll take care of it, if migrant still has to buy their own, uh, or these funds, you know, I think, I know this is backpacks, which I, I don't want to include backpacks, everybody has their own style, but at least supplies. At least just supplies.
Part of, part of the discussion was lowering the school supply list because it's gotten out of hand. I think it's, it's, it's just too large and the reality, this is my opinion only, but, and it's something we've discussed, is that, that it's our responsibility, it's a school's responsibility, people are already paying taxes, they're, they're already contributing through, through that form, uh, whether it's local, state, or federal. And I think that the supply list have kind of got out of hand. And when you have a, an, a household that has two, three, four, four students and, and each bag, and each list is, is, i- it, it gets up there pretty quick. And, and other districts are starting then now, like the crayons, the glue, tho- those type of instructional resources, they belong to the school, that's a school's responsibility, I, I think at the end of the day. And I know that you're working on it, and I know you're restructuring the, the budget so that we're more student-focused and there's more funding going to the campuses for additional resources. And, uh, but I just, you know, I think that's something, yes, like, like I said, it's something we should all voice that we should start moving forward in the same direction that other districts are doing and making sure that, uh, our responsibility doesn't fall on, on parents.
Board President and members of the board, I, I, I agree totally. Um, this has been challenged, actually, with school supply list under FAPE, because how can we ask kids to, um, or give parents to say, here's a school supply list, but then it goes against, uh, FAPE, which is Free and Appropriate Public Education? So, so that has been, um, that's, uh, being discussed in, in court as we speak. So many school districts can buy in bulk, um, and, and using Title I and so forth. There's a, a myriad of funding out there that we can use. Uh, and, and we need to maybe shift our instructional strategies, our practices, so that we can provide the, the supplies that they need anyway.
Definitely. And as a former classroom teacher, we need all the supplies. I know the lot, the list gets long, but the kids use them up in a matter of two, three weeks, all the crayons are gone, the pencils are gone, so they're definitely needed. And if we can do that, that'll be great. I don't know if, uh, the reason why I pulled this out, does migrant still want to spend these funds on buying supplies? The backpacks, they, you know, that's a different cost, but the, uh, the supplies.
I, I need to find out if it's a use or lose. So in other words, if, if we either use or lose it.
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, if, if we don't spend it, we may have to pay it back. So I need to find out for sure.
There's never an overabundance of supplies, so might as well just, yeah, okay.
And, um-
Hey, Dr. Coronado, I'm sorry.
The circumstances that, uh-
Somebody's answer?
Oh, there's Ms. Godovina, she's with the migrant.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, if I could interject, just so that, just to, hello, just to inter, explain a little bit, if the district were to buy supplies, migrant wouldn't be able to buy them anymore because we can't supplant, it's considering supplanting. So just to answer your question, yes, if y'all buy supplies for all the students, then yes, we wouldn't be able to buy supplies. We could still buy the backpacks, though.
Right. Good.
migrant funding is only supplemental, so any, any district-wide initiative that's taken, then, then migrant can't, like she said, it's supplanting. So that's the difference here. Correct.
And, and given that we've had issues with, um, things in general in this country where there's a shortage of, if we can, you know, act on it whenever we can, whenever we can, as soon as possible, so that we do get what we need and not have to wait because of the shortage of stuff, so, uh, something to consider.
Yes.
Dr. Coronado?
Yes.
It's not on the list, and, and I know we really shouldn't, but look at the uniforms like that young lady Kane about doing away with uniforms. You know, her can go to Sam's and buy one, two tops, one short, and I know, because we do it all the time. So just take a look, I, I don't know which direction you want to go, I know we shouldn't be discussing, but just letting me know.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
So then, um, do we approve this anyway?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, we have motion by- by Mister Gonzalez and a second by Mister Dos Santos to approve-
N one.
N one. Backpack supplies RFP number twenty-two dash zero five dash sixteen. Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say aye or no when I call your name. Mister Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Costa Viño?
Aye.
Doctor Rodriguez? Mister Dos Santos?
Aye.
And Mister Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item ten, discussion items. Dr. Coronado?
Board President, uh, you have with you, um, uh, I guess I can say A and B, right? You have in your possession interim financial report for eight months. Um, and also the acknowledgement for the, uh, current tax and delinquent taxes. You have the report? Subject to your questions and discussion.
Just a discussion item, right? Our budget's based on ninety-two, we're at ninety-three, almost ninety-four, and our budget on the delinquent is ten, and we're at almost nineteen, so we're okay?
We're okay, we'll, we'll be okay. We, we had, um, we had forecasted a hundred and sixty million in salaries and we're going to be at about one forty-two when it's all said and done. So we're, we're, we'll be okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work you've put into the budget, I know it's been a lot, so I just want to thank you.
I want to thank them.
And everybody else here.
I think all their hair got grayer since I've been here.
Except the medical. Except the medical, he never has, he doesn't have gray hair.
You're right.
We've definitely taken a different approach to the budget, as in previous years.
Okay, ready to move?
Yep.
Thank you, Doctor Coronel, and staff. Item eleven, discussion and possible action items?
Before we proceed, Board President, I'd like to remove eleven D.
Okay. As per Dr. Coronel, we will remove eleven D. Item A, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to change or cancel the regular board meeting scheduled on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Doctor Coronel?
Board President, so we have a scheduled meeting, regular board meeting, on June twenty-first, and we have it again on August sixteenth. The district is closed for two weeks in July, and it only allows ten working days left between the board meeting and the, I guess, the summer break. We feel that all the work to close out the year, to include passing the budget, we can do on June twenty-first, and therefore no need to have a July board meeting. And we can go back to just have an August sixteenth regular board meeting. And so my recommendation is to cancel the regular board meeting for the month of July.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mister Nieto and a second by Mister Gonzalez to consider not having a regular board meeting for July. Do we have any discussion? If not, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say aye when I call your name. Mister Nieto?
Aye.
Miss Sustaita?
Aye.
Costa Viño?
Aye.
Doctor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mister Los Santos?
Aye.
Mister Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, question and possible action for the board to consider a nomination from within our local board to fill a position on the TASB board of directors or endorse a nominated individual from another board in our TASB region at the July or August board meeting. Doctor Coronel?
Board President, members of the board, if you'd like to nominate someone to compete to sit on the TASB board of directors, or you can do nothing, and you can, there is someone running already for this seat, so it's up to the board on to take action on this one, or just do nothing. It is.
We can endorse already, somebody already on there?
Not yet.
Okay, it says here, or endorse a nominated individual. Right, I would like to endorse, but it does say here, or endorse a nominated individual from another board, right?
Yes.
So we don't do that right now?
No, until we get the list.
Because she's not the only one, somebody else could actually be running between now and then.
Correct.
Nobody here wants to do it?
Coach Jesse, Marcos, Jackie?
I believe that the acting delegate has done a very good job for us, and has represented as well, so.
So this would be on the June board that you can go ahead and endorse, if you'd like.
So it's not action on this?
So we won't take any action on this? Okay, not an action? Let's move on to item C. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to upgrade the services for hotspots for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year to support learning recovery. Doctor Coronel?
Board President, we have three thousand hotspots for the district right now, and so this is at no cost to the district, so this is using ECF funds, so basically it just renews it for another year. They're good to have in the event that, let's say, we have another strain or something else comes up, and we have to do some remote learning.
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mister Gonzalez to approve, and a second by Doctor Rodriguez to consider the approval to upgrade the services, no, 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 yeah, for the hotspots. Okay, I got a little ahead of myself there, so. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say aye when I call your names. Mister Nieto?
Aye.
Miss Sustaita?
Aye.
Costa Viño?
Aye.
Doctor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mister Los Santos?
Aye.
And Mister Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now we go to item E. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's group dental insurance through Emeritus RFP number twenty dash zero four dash eighteen, or authorize administration to solicit proposals for same. Doctor Coronel?
Board President, this is the last year in the dental insurance program through Emeritus. Again, we, the survey that we showed during the superintendent's report shows support for the dental insurance, so my recommendation is to continue for another year.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Doctor Rodriguez and a second by Mister Gonzalez to consider the renewal of the district's group dental insurance through Emeritus, RFP number twenty dash zero four dash eighteen. Any discussion? Okay, take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say aye when I call your name. Mister Nieto?
Aye.
Miss Sustaita?
Aye.
Costa Viño?
Aye.
Doctor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mister Los Santos?
Aye.
And Mister Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action for the board to consider renewal of Blue Cross and Blue Shield's proposal to administer the district's self-funded employee benefit program for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three plan year, or authorize administrations to list proposals for the same RFP number twenty dash zero four dash sixteen. Doctor Coronel?
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to recommend that we renew our Blue Cross, Blue Shield proposal, this is another, where we have another year. Again, we, the survey data supports that we keep the Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
So move.
We have a motion by Mister Nieto and a second by Mister Gonzalez for us to consider the renewal of the Blue Cross, Blue Shield proposal to administer the district's self-funded employee benefit program for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Any discussion?
Just like Doctor Coronel's mentioned, that on the survey, a high percentage of staff members selected Blue Cross, that they were doing well.
Yes, I agree with that. Let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say aye when I call your name. Mister Nieto?
Aye.
Miss Sustaita?
Aye.
Costa Viño?
Aye.
Doctor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mister Los Santos?
Aye.
And Mister Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, discussion and possible action for the board to consider renewal of the Aria's proposal to provide pharmacy benefit management services for the district's self-funded employee benefit program for the planned year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, or authorize administration to solicit proposals for same RFP number twenty-one dash zero seven dash thirty-six. Doctor Coronel?
Board President, again, as you saw on the survey, there was, this wasn't as high, but it's still, a majority still agrees to keep with the pharmacy benefit, so we'd like to, my recommendation is to keep this for another year.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mister Nieto.
I'll second.
And a second by Doctor Rodriguez for the renewal of the Aria's proposal to provide pharmacy benefits management services for the district's self-funded employee benefit program for the planned year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Oh.
Go ahead.
I had some questions, I was looking over the costs and the breakdowns, and I just had some questions for the director of insurance, because there's, or maybe you can answer, if you want to, I know you like to go first, so. I'm gonna go back real quick, is July, there's some questions and some concerns, I had some red flags from the very beginning, but I just wanted to make sure that this is advantageous to the school district. I only ask questions because there's four categories, four categories that I care about, which is students, parents, staff, and then taxpayers. And this, I understand was surveyed, and there was a fifty-three percent return that they didn't want to change the PBM. But I'm looking on the taxpayer side now, just to make sure that the numbers are actually advantageous to the school district, and to make sure that we're not overspending, because I know that there is a deficit currently right now, correct, from the information that was sent. And the reason I'm asking is because back in July of twenty-one, July sixth, it was presented to the district on the PBM, and a lot of people don't understand what the PBM, what a pharmacy-based manager is and PBM and what their role is. And so I know Mister De La Rosa, I asked for a workshop, he provided that, and there was some information shared prior to the July sixth meeting. And then we went to the July sixth meeting, I remember that when it was on the agenda, and we were told that the rubric now had focused on transparent PBMs, what they sometimes consider like pass-through PBMs versus the traditional PBM, because you'd be able to audit the transparent PBM more than you would the traditional. And that was to make sure that we were paying the appropriate cost per medicines, et cetera, et cetera, and that the savings, and that we're actually getting the rebates that we're supposed to receive. At that time, I did ask, I said, what are the rebates? And the rebates come in two forms, they come in credits, or they come into, I think, cash, right, cash reimbursements to the district. And so I asked at the time, what is the reimbursement for Prime Blue Cross, Blue Shield? Because like I said, Blue Cross, Blue Shield is a very large company, they're very well-known through the healthcare industry, and as far as the PBM side is concerned, there's only six PBMs in the country, when I was researching this, that provide over ninety percent of the prescriptions in the country. Prime Blue Cross, Blue Shield is one of those. So red flag was, we're going from a very large company that probably has a lot of leverage, buying power, incentives, guarantees, et cetera, and we're going to a very small, a small, a small one, Aria, which they hold a very, very tiny percentage of scripts that are written throughout the country. In addition to that, so we talked about the transparency and how that was a priority, because that automatically kind of, you know, filtered our options. And then, and then another red flag I had at the time was that before we were paying two dollars with Prime Blue Cross, Blue Shield per script, and with Aria, we're paying four dollars. Okay? So at the time, it didn't make sense, but I needed to research the topic more, and at the time, we moved forward, and we did. But at the time when I asked, I said, what is the rebates that we're getting in the form of a credit? Blue Cross, Blue Shield was giving us a rebate in the form of a credit that was being applied to our medical costs. Administrative fees, right, yes. And I asked at the time, and they estimated the number was about three to four million at the time, that we're receiving per year in credits. I don't, and I know, they said it was approximate, but that was in the minutes, I figured that was kind of high, but.
It was, it's closer to a million dollars.
To a million dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
Million, million and a half, I do believe we said three, and it was a little high.
Yeah, I think you said three to four, but yeah, I figured it was more like two, two million dollars. And so my question was, is, I saw that the, and I talked to Doctor Dino, because I asked when I saw the numbers that were presented here in the graph, that the net RX rebate right now at seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, that's just covering the first quarter return? Is that correct?
That is the first quarter of, actually the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. So we have about a little over, almost six hundred thousand dollars in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-one, and then the first quarter of twenty twenty-two that are pending.
So how much total are we looking to receive back? That's the concern, is where are the rebates? That's what I was kind of questioning.
We're estimating, right now, again, we have, and I have some data here, let me put that to the sheet here. So the first quarter, again, was about seventy-six thousand dollars that we're receiving in the check. For quarter four of twenty twenty-one, they come up to about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And then for the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, a little over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we're looking at right now roughly close to six hundred thousand dollars that we've already received, or actually over that, and we're still going into the last quarter of the year. So we're anticipating about a million dollars we're going to get back into the plan.
And you're saying that's exactly the same as we were receiving through Prime?
Again, it's hard to tell, because we don't know the actual money that's coming in, and we're just getting a credit towards our administrative fees with Prime Therapeutics. So we're getting a credit towards our administrative fees, we don't know if it could be more, we don't know if it could be less, because again, it's just depending on, you know, different formulary list that they have, you know, different rebates amounts. So, long story short, I guess for the lack of your opinion, it's going to take about a year to determine whether the Prime Therapeutics was more advantageous, and then keeping the rebates in lieu of giving us a rebate, excuse me, a credit on our administrative fees versus getting the actual cash in the bank at the end of the day. So, again, we're still on the fence with that, but I can tell you that our planned spend this year versus last year in the PBM alone, we're looking at almost a six hundred thousand dollar difference in savings with Aria than we did last year with Prime.
And with that savings, is that covering all meds? That's infusion drugs, compounds, like all the high-dollar beds, that's covering everything? Like, nobody's having issues getting their, nobody's having increased co-pays or having issues with, they're not getting the medications? You haven't heard of anything like that?
Anybody, anybody that gets a script is going to get their medication. Now, you're not going to walk into a pharmacy as a, you know, barely being diagnosed as a diabetic, you're not going to walk in with a script for Trulicity. No, they're going to give you Metformin, and you're going to have to do step therapy and other cost-containing measures, because Trulicity and all these other diabetic, all the ones you see on, you know, TV, they're very, very expensive, anywhere from a thousand to five thousand dollars a month for a thirty-day supply. So as a, as a recently diagnosed diabetic, no, I'm not going to walk into the pharmacy with a script for Trulicity, and that's, no, that will not be approved. You need to go through the proper, you're going to start up with Metformin, see how that works, and then eventually you'll get to a high-cost drug that the district covers, either at a formula copay, which is thirty dollars, or a non-formulary, which is fifty. So basis of formulary or non-formulary co-pays, your non-formulary co-pays are going to be higher, because those are little brand-new drugs that are just on the market, they're more expensive, and they're not, they don't have the clinical, I mean, yes, they do what they do, but there's not enough evidence to put them on a formulary list. So people are taking expensive medications, yes, you're going to pay a little bit more for a copay.
I was looking at the cost, because the RX cost, and I said, the RX cost only has a thirteen percent difference at this time between last year's, between, up until April thirtieth. So there's a thirteen percent spread, but in our claims, when we're looking at our claims and comparing claims last year at this time, we're at seven point two million with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, in medical claims, and here we're at eight million. But I know, I understand that some of that eight million is COVID-nineteen cost, testing cost, et cetera. But just the numbers, I just had questions because of our fixed costs. Our fixed costs last year were one point seven million, and currently right now they're at two point six, so you have a eight hundred ninety-four thousand, almost a nine hundred thousand dollar difference, so.
Yeah, it's an increase.
And that, that difference is because of what? Is it because of the loss of credit?
It's because of the increase in administrative fees through Blue Cross and Blue Shield, yes, we're not getting that credit for the PBM, and also that's because of the increase in stop-loss. We had to go, if we remember, we went out to bid last year, and we had to increase our deductible from a hundred, our individual, individual-specific deductible from a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So at the time, the Blue Cross stop-loss was extremely expensive, so we had to move to a different stop-loss company, which we're going to bring to the board for y'all's approval to renew or grow out to bid. So with the increased admin fees and, of course, the increased stop-loss fees, that's the big issue right there, that we're seeing increased admin fees.
Yeah, because I'm not going to focus on the medical claims, because like I said, that has COVID-nineteen embedded in that, like as far as the testing.
It's not only COVID-nineteen, but like Doctor Coronel mentioned, we're seeing skyrocket inflation. So again, hospitals, it's costing them more to get bandages, to get syringes, to pay people, so that cost is.
So, so my only question is, I don't want to, I don't want to lose money, that's my concern. And the way I see it is, what do you expect the fixed costs to end up at then, at the end of the quarter, compared to RX? In other words, you're saying that the rebates that we're going to receive from Aria, and then the savings and prescription costs are going to offset the loss that we're having in fixed costs due to credit?
Yes, that's the projection.
That's what you're projecting.
And that was a projection last year, yes. Now, could be more, could be less, I don't think we're going to see, you know, a substantial difference, is going to say, oh, this one's, you know, greater than this one. But again, we are paying for, and you're absolutely correct, Aria's has a very, very, you know, small share of the market, but that's more advantageous to us, actually, because we're able to show that transparency, we know that we're paying what we get for, and that's what we're paying for that four dollar per paid claim and administrative fee. So we're getting that transaction, because PBMs are going to make money, okay?
Well, I understand that.
Aria's making their money, they're telling us this is how much we're making, all the savings is passed through, okay? Or on the other side, on the traditional side, there's spread costs built in, so we're not necessarily, if we're being told we're reimbursing a hundred and ten dollars for a script, in reality, we may have only cost them eighty, and the PBM's keeping the difference.
And what contract do, do we have a contract with, of course, we have a contract with[1752.48] And what contract do, do we have a contract with, of course, we have a contract with Aria. And how much are we giving up as far, are we giving, are we getting a hundred percent rebate?
Yes, sir.
We're not giving any percentage away?
That's in the contract, yes.
That's in the contract, okay. Because there's companies that they audit these things for free, they charge for free. And they'll go and look to see whether we're actually getting the proper rebates and the amounts and they don't charge anything.
It all depends on what the rebate of the drug is. So Trulicity may be thirty dollars, fifty dollars, I can tell you off the top of my head. But those are also contracted, the rebates that we get are contracted versus the networks that they participate in. But really, they're, they're almost all the same. And rebates are really a fancy way of a bribe. I mean, we're going to pay, we're going to reimburse the pharmacy benefit manager money to prescribe this drug over this drug. So that's just unfortunately, that's the way the market is, it's not really fair. There's been attempts to correct that legislatively, but we are, you know, we are where we are.
It looks like a cat and mouse type situation, the cat's always telling the mouse to get closer. And that's why, and that's why, like I said, I researched it in traditionals. I saw the traditional PBMs were more advantageous because they're more, they are more aggressive and offer higher, the rebates, of course, and guarantees and whatnot. I just want to make sure that.
They keep them though, that's.
Yeah, I want to make sure our deficit, because I know we have a deficit, we had to have to add to it. I hope that once COVID-19 is over and we move forward with Aria that we.
Yeah, and I, and I have some information on that. It's, you know, not as bad as it seems, this is probably not the item to discuss this as far as our plan funding. But we will be, Dr. Gordon and I will be discussing this and bringing back a different item in June to adjust the funding to our plan for next year.
All right. Okay. Mr. Osvaldo?
Mike, is, I know we have listed here Shepherd-Walton King, but is it Hub or Shepherd-Walton King?
Well, it's actually Hub, Shepherd-Walton King, for the next item, sorry. Are you talking for this, for this item?
For this item.
No, there's no, there's no agent for Aria, for the pharmacy benefit manager.
Or agent?
No. Did I miss something?
Oh, this is the next one.
What's the next one?
Go ahead.
I have one more question, maybe kind of something with pharmacy maybe, but the COVID testing that we have over at the high school, is that going to keep on going until next year? I know that some of the tests are going to be expired soon or something. What's going to happen with that, with that curative, are we still going to keep them on?
Yes, we, we have a contract with them towards the end of the, until the end of May, okay? So we'll probably, you know, re-up that contract. But it doesn't cost the district anything to have curative out there. They bill insurance companies or they do, they bill Medicare, they bill Medicaid, but it doesn't cause the district anything to have that.
Okay, I thought I had seen Esser Funds, something about Esser.
But that's for local, that's for local, that's for local doctors and they were giving tests.
Yes, the Esser Funds that we're proposing to cover the COVID costs are for the tests that were covered through our Blue Cross and Blue Shield program. So if I went to the doctor and got tested, insurance pays. So we're going to, we're going to recoup or try to recoup, or we are going to recoup all the money that we paid out of the health plan for testing and medical.
And that's already been allocated.
Right, it's already been allocated.
So at the end of the day, just to wrap it up, you're saying that the, the lower prescription costs, the cash rebates that we're going to receive are going to offset the increase in fixed costs?
The, yes, the rebate, that's, that's what I'm anticipating, yes. And again, it will take a year to notice or to get more data, at least to the end of this plan year so we can, you know, get an apples-to-apples comparison. And now we know.
And how's the specialty pharmacy working out? Is that aspect of it, any problems with that?
There's, there's about three or four different specialty pharmacies that are utilized. So, so just to give you all an idea, when we talk about a specialty drug and the cost, I had that here somewhere. And we have chemotherapy medications that some employers are taking upward of fifteen to twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a month. And these go through specialty pharmacies, you can't get them at Walgreens, you can't get them through, you know, your local mom-and-pop PBMs. Because they're specialized, they have to go through there. So I haven't had any issues or anybody complaining or about that.
The stop-loss applies to the specialty pharmacy also?
Yes, yes. The stop-loss applies to all drugs. So the individual-specific deductible of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is medical claims and drugs as well.
Thank you, Mike.
And this is, Dr. Coronado, you said this is for one year, correct?
That's it, and then we go for, we can go for an RFP next year.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, take it to a vote? Are we good to go yet? Okay. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name, Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Saito?
Aye.
Jose Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Dos Santos?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item H, discussing a possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's professional errors and omissions insurance or authorize administration to solicit proposals for same RFP number twenty dash zero eight dash thirty-one. Dr. Coronel?
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to recommend that we renew our professional errors and omissions insurance and not go out for an RFP at this time.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nieto.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Rodriguez. For us to consider renewal of the district's professional errors and omissions insurance. Any discussion?
Yes, now, Mike, is this Hub or Shepherd-Walton?
It's now Hub.
Okay.
Shepherd-Walton King.
They got bought, okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure I could participate, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name, Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Saito?
Aye.
Jose Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Dos Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item I. Discussion on possible action for the board to consider approval to set a meeting date for the public hearing of the budget and tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. Dr. Coronel?
Board President and members of the board, we need to set a public hearing date for the budget, which I recommend as June twenty-first. That will be our, when we propose our budget and then the tax rate for August sixteenth and to adopt the tax rate.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by, second by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Jose Dos Santos. To have the public hearings on the June the twenty-first and then on August sixteenth. Do we have any discussion? Take it to a vote, signify your approval by saying I want to call your name, Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Saito?
Aye.
Jose Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Dos Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item J, discussing a possible action for board to consider approval of administration's ranking, recommendation for the running track improvements project at Bobby Lackey Stadium, RFP number twenty-two dash zero six dash twenty-one, and two, to authorize administration to negotiate the, and approve the contract. Dr. Coronel?
Members of the board, our board president, I'd like to recommend that we use, I believe it's Benyon, is that Benyon?
Benyon?
Bynon, okay, there we go. It's, it's ranked number one in the rank to proceed with the track improvements at Bobby Lackey Stadium.
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Second and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the administration's ranking recommendation for the running track improvements at Bobby Lackey Stadium, RFP number twenty-two dash zero six dash twenty-three. Do we have any discussion? Okay?
I have
Okay.
several questions on this. What are we, how many times have we replaced this track since, since, I guess, before this went here? I guess, this is the second time we do this in the last seven years at least since I've been here, is that correct?
Coach, if I recall, when we did the turf at the stadium, they didn't do the foundation? So the company, I think it was just the surface, it was field turf that did kind of what we have at East Field Turf? And I believe that's who this company is, Field Turf, to do the whole base.
Yes, but this is for the running track.
Yeah, but the, the base of the track was never done. If my understanding is what I was.
Good evening, members of the board, Coach Coyar, Dr. Coronel. Yes, so that is correct, Mr. Gonzalez. It was just the surface that was done, it was back around twenty-seventeen, I want to say, about five years ago. But it wasn't, we didn't touch the, the base, which is the asphalt, it's an asphalt base. That wasn't touched at all, it was just an overlayment on top of the, of the track.
What did that cost us back then?
I want to say, but see, that was thrown into the project with the field. I'd have to look at, I don't have off the top of my head, but I can look at that and put on the update.
I guess my concern is, the real issue here is the flooding, correct? Is that what, what caused the problem last time and that's why they had to replace the surface, resurface it at that time?
The thinking is, since we can't see the asphalt right now, the underneath, underneath the, the top layer, the thinking is that since it hasn't been touched, since it was done back in the, in the, I believe it was twenty, two thousand oh eight or two thousand nine, then, then we're thinking that there's already damage to the asphalt. And so that flooding, it just exacerbated the problem. And so it started, you know, bubbling up or lifting the existing track. And so when we called the warranty in for that track, they would come in and show us, look, this is deeper. This, this bubble is just coming in from deeper underneath the asphalt, the base, than just the surface, which is what they had applied. So it was a combination of warranty repairs and actual repairs that cost, cost us money. And so that's why we're suspecting, we are adding an alternate to look at the asphalt. And we broke it out that way to see, we're suspecting that we're going to have to take it, we're going to have to replace the asphalt. But we added it as a separate cost item, which in this case is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars added to the, the base bid. So we don't have to take it and we don't have to replace the asphalt, we save the hundred and thirteen. But we're suspecting we're going to have to.
What, I, I noticed this is a significant price difference. And obviously you got the Austin company, is Maryland, is this company out of Maryland going to subcontract this out? Or, because I mean, it's, it just doesn't seem cost-effective.
One of the subs that they've disclosed that they use is Mid Valley Paving, a company out of Mercedes, they're very reputable. They've done several projects for us as well, including some field turf that they've done. And they did the, the east side, the visitor-side parking lot for the stadium as well. So they use that subcontractor to, to work out here.
So are they, so is this Mid Valley Paving, are they doing the track itself too, the surfacing of the track as well?
No, no, my understanding and, you know, I can, yeah, they're just doing the asphalt, right? And then they get other.
But there may not even be any need for the asphalt or the, depending on the, on the damage on the base itself, there may not even be any, any need. I'm just concerned, this is a big price difference and I want to make sure we're getting our money's worth. Helus is a known company for facilities, you know, turf, tracks and so forth. This other company, it's just, I find it odd that it's almost a three hundred thousand dollars price difference and they're out of state. If I was out of state and I'm bidding somewhere out of state, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and bid out all the traveling expenses and so forth. So I, I don't understand, I, I have a concern with that.
If I may, what he's talking about, I'm looking at the bids, the alternate bid, it significantly, and I'm wondering why. When you have the alternate bid and the alternate bid one and two, one of the companies is, can I say the numbers? How much he charges us or no? Can I, is that, can I say that? Oh, I can, I can go into numbers, okay? Because one of the, and the alternate bid too, and here's a huge price difference. One company is charging us fifty thousand and then the, the other company is charging us five hundred thousand for the same. Why is there such a huge price difference?
Well, and it's the way they, they submitted their pricing.
Wow.
So five hundred thousand is actually saying, we're replacing what we gave you as the base bid with this cost and that includes the alternate, the alternate, or the, actually the higher quality product that they're proposing. So, so again, to, to explain the, the whole project, we're asking for a higher quality track. We initially requested a base bid track, which is a multi-layer product that they offer. And then we asked, okay, also tell us how much it's going to cost if we get your higher quality option or product. And so Bynon said, you just add to our existing cost fifty thousand dollars and that's your higher quality product cost, right? And, and Helus, what they said was, okay, substitute the cost for the product that we gave you under the base bid with this cost and that is, that is the, the cost for the higher quality product. So it's the way they submitted the, the price.
Sir, were these sealed bids?
Yes.
I asked at, at the last board meeting, board meeting we had, I don't think Dr. Coronel was here, that for sealed bids, when you, you know, when you brought them to the table, I asked that the companies that are brought, your top three ranks, I wanted to know when exactly they came in, like if there was fifteen applicants, if your number one was number five or was it number fifteen? And I don't think it's on here.
We did.
For sealed bids, yeah, remember we talked about that one meeting and we said, hey, for sealed bids, I know you stamp them?
Yes.
But I wanted to know, when did they come in? Did they come in first, second, ten, twelve, thirteen, you know?
We can provide that information.
But I don't see that on here.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. I know they're, they're received at their business office and they, they get stamped there when they get received. But we can provide that information for you. There's only those two companies that submitted the bids.
Okay, only these two, or the only one?
Only those two companies submitted bids, right.
Yeah, and I'd like to see who was first, was Hella first or was Bynon first or, you know, that's all, just to see when they come in, whether it's two, ten, twelve.
Amerigo?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else in the valley that has the same track?
Yes, there is.
Bynon and Helus are usually the top two competitors that do the tracks. Donna, Donna has it, they just got theirs last year. Our track coaches went to Donna and PSJ North, they have Bynon too, but they have the, the upper tier track. So our track coaches visited Donna and they were very comfortable with Donna has currently right now.
So, so everyone had a chance to, to check them out and.
To sample the product?
Yes, yeah.
One of the other things that I'm, I'm looking, scanning about ninety days estimated, if you would go with Bynon. During summer, when would this start or the track isn't needed? You know, I don't know when this would even start during summer?
We're projected start June first.
Okay.
And the contract, well, it's around seventy days. We discussed this with the, the company. So worst case, we want to get it done before August, that's our goal, before football season starts. Worst-case scenario, we'll start it and if we need to stop, we can stop and they can come back and stripe it at the end after football season or just complete it. But that's been the common situation with other districts, that's what they'll do. They'll halt it and so we can, won't disrupt the football season and then we'll come back and finish.
I know summer track will be taking place there then?
Summer track is going to be at East next year.
At East, okay.
What's the warranty that they have?
Ten years. Ten years? Ten-year one.
Yeah, the base bid product is five years and the higher quality product is a ten-year product.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and Helus has five years for both, both products, there's no difference. And if I may, just maybe it'll offer some clarification, Coach Trevino. Bynon has been known to do a lot of work with field turf and field turf is a well-known manufacturer of turf, artificial turfs in the industry. So I don't know if field turf.
Okay, no, to me it's just, to me, if I, if I have a chance to make an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I should will. But this right here is just a big price difference. I, I still have a hard time grasping this price difference.
I, to. The only thing, and that would be speculation, the thing we can think of, because the higher cost came in with the alternate, which is the asphalt. And so it could be their subs and the cost that they got from their subs, that's the only thing we can think of.
And then with the flooding, is, did the flooding damage this track at one time or another?
And again.
Because I know it floods terribly there in that, in that corner of Westgate and that other street there.
So we're thinking there was already damage underneath the, the track, the asphalt. And so the flooding didn't help and it just made the problem worse. Now we have and we're hoping we don't get any, any major storms, you know, between now and the time that the city of West, the city of West is working on, on regional detention facilities. And one of these facilities is going to be at the, at the Peña City, but Old City Park, and I apologize for the name, but Pablo Peña, I believe, Park. And so they're going to be working on that within, you know, a year and a half or so. And that should alleviate a lot of these, these problems as well.
See, that's just my, my concern is moving, moving along with this, this project. And I mean, we don't want to leave things up to hope because of the storms around here.
Coach, remember that workshop we went to with the city? The one with the B. Garza project?
Yes.
So part of the flooding that was explained to us was to alleviate the flooding on the, on the frontage road, the Westgate area, because that gets really bad, was having that detention pond that we said yesterday, we expanded it and then they fixed their drainage or their pipes to connect where Pisano and Peña and all those streets get really flooded to move that, that water out.
But that, when is that going to take into effect?
They're already working on that.
Okay. I just, I would hate to, a year down the road or a year and a half down the road, hey, we had another big storm, hey, we got to replace a track again. And to me, it would just would be counterproductive. When was the last time, when was the last time they replaced a track over at East?
That's, that's, that was before the two thousand seventeen, back in two thousand and twelve, I believe.
Two thousand and twelve, what's the lifespan? I, I mean, I'd like to just see, if we're doing for one, let's do for the other, let's get a, a, a maintenance program or something going. Because it can't be just one school, one school, one school, and that's how it's been the last few years since I've been.
We're looking at that project, Coach. I did talk to the track coaches also from East and they said that they're, not that we're not going to do it, but the track is still good.
Okay. Okay.
That's why, yeah, and I did talk to Coach, uh, Owens and Coach, uh, Davis, which were the track coaches.
Okay, yeah.
And that's a, that's a field, field turf field is what Coach Burgett had mentioned years ago, before we did that one, that he was really pleased with the, with the practice field that East had.
Yes.
Uh, even though it costs us a little bit more to put field turf at the, at the other stadium, but the longevity that they've had, cuz I think it's what, it's gonna go on ten years already.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, but they do a great job of really taking care of that, uh, field turf over there.
And not that we need to add more to the, to the, to, to the cost of things, but, uh, what are we gonna do with the track at Central?
Well, we need track at the middle schools all around, not just Central, so that's a, that's a, a long-range plan that we have also.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, we've been discussing that, so it's, it's not just Central Middle School, at least they have something, right? But you know, other schools, the other middle schools don't have anything.
Yeah.
So that's part of the projects that we have.
I only ask because the last time that I was there, saw it, and, and it's been a while, to me it was more of a safety issue. I don't wanna see anybody going out there twisting ankles or tearing anything up because we didn't take care of a, of a, of a huge pothole or anything like that.
I think that's why we closed it off, Coach, cuz of that concern. And then they, the city built that walk around the other park, uh, Faria's Park, they have that walkway now and I think that's when we closed it, cuz people would go at night to go walk.
Yeah.
But, but you're right, it's a liability.
But the question is, um, have we done anything to fix what we had? Cuz I know, I know that, uh, we have two schools that go there to, uh, practice or use it for, uh, dur- during track season, or has that been stopped?
No, they're still going there, Coach, uh, so the goal is to eventually have four lane tracks at all the middle schools, that's what we wanna do. Uh, but yes, it's, it's not in the best shape, uh, maintenance had to go this year and patch some stuff up, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of facilities that we still have plans for, uh, and slowly, several at a time, we'll, we'll, we'll get them done. So, including trying to turf the, the baseball and softball fields.
Mm-hmm. If I may, uh, we just got this information from our purchasing director, Mr. Valde Garcia, for, uh, to answer your question, Mr. Los Santos, Hellas came in at ten fifty six AM and, uh, Bynon came in at twelve thirty PM, both on the same day, uh, April twenty eighth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, let's take that to the vote. Now, we're, we're, we're voting on, uh, on part one, right? Cuz we still have to look at the administration's, uh-
Recommendation.
Negotiation to, so let's, let's vote on, 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 uh, on, uh, on one. Um, let's take it to a vote, signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saita?
Chief of-
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now for the, um, part two. Authorization, uh, of the administration to negotiate and approve the contract.
To move to approve, I thought I was making it for both, but move to approve as recommended.
Well, I just, I just wanna clarify to make sure that, that, uh, so, uh, we're gonna, okay, let's vote on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Dr. Rodriguez, do we need to, we've already covered a lot there in the discussion, so let's take it to a vote and, uh, signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Ostrivino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We now go to item K. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a procurement method of construction for the HVAC improvement projects district-wide. A, board determination of a procurement method of construction that would provide the best value to the district for the projects. B, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And C, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Dr. Coronel.
Board President and members of the board, um, we, our campuses are, um, need, are in need of a new HVAC system. ESSER allows us, um, to use funding to, um, to put in, um, HVAC systems, uh, for pressure air, cleaner air, a more modern systems, um, our systems are dated. So what, uh, the recommendation is that we, um, that we use a design build method of construction, uh, so in other words, go out for an RFQ, uh, solicit, um, the qualifications and then, and then go out for an RFP, um, so that we can get the HVAC, uh, at, I, I believe it's all campuses, is that correct? My, it's, right.
I'll move to approve administration's, uh, recommendation on the design build method of construction, um, and to delegate administration's authority to rank the qualification statements and approve the criteria and points to be used for ranking the qualification statements.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez to cover all the items-
Yep.
On, on, on this, uh, agenda item. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna cover everything here and we have a second by Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
Yes, I have questions.
Yes, sir.
What is the total, what is the total cost project, I mean, what, how much funding is being, um, allocated to this initiative here? Like, how, how much are you planning and we, well, wait, we shouldn't talk about that.
No.
Like, I'm just, I'm just worried about the dollar amount, I know we're moving fast, I don't wanna, I know ESSER funds in in spring of twenty-four, you have to, everything has to be completed by spring of twenty-four, correct? That's according to ESSER?
Yes, but we're, the way we're gonna split it up is-
September twenty-four, right?
Uh, but we're gonna use part of, uh, ESSER two and part of ESSER three, so, um, the, the reason we're trying to move on, on this one is because we wanna be able to use, um, ESSER two first. Um, and I, we, we have allocated funding already for ESSER two and three for, for this. I, I don't know if I should say that amount because-
Yeah, no, you don't have to, we don't wanna say that, yes, because then you shoot yourself in the foot. I already don't like the process, period, because it's, engineers, uh, throw out numbers already and so that kind of, you know, of course, that, that, that affects bids. I mean, in the previous, in the previous ones that we've done, we've discussed total project costs, things like that, the plan design.
Yep.
And it's just, uh, you know, um, I just wanna make sure that, yeah, that we, that we, that we're with the NESTR and we do complete construction and that we don't end up, you know, getting stuck with the bill at the end and, and, and the expense that we can't have. And then, so with this method here, with the design, I just want some more information, how does that work, the, the design?
So the RFQ initially, sir, is, is the request for qualifications, it, it has no dollar amount, it, it just, they, they basically have to sell us on who they are.
Right, and this is an engineering firm or, or a company that's gonna actually install the AC systems, or how does that work?
It, it could be, uh, um, it could be a, a general contractor, it could be an ESCO, it, it really depends on-
Just any, yeah, any company that can then subcontract, et cetera, whatnot.
Right, and then once, once we approve a list of, of the, um, once we receive the RFQs or the, uh, the vendors, uh, then, then we can determine or negotiate, uh, based on an RFP, so, to, to actually bid on the actual job.
And who's gonna, who's gonna come up with the rubric to assess these companies?
I guess that comes out of, of Amerigo's office.
Is that, is that like a, a, do you have like a consultant specialist or how, how you just, how, how do they come up with the rubric?
The criteria to, to rank the, the RFQ bidders is included the agenda, so you're approving that as part of this process.
Right.
Right, and so the RFP process has a different criteria, slightly different, and so that one is gonna come to you once we, we bring you the, uh, the RFQ, uh, bidders or the-
Well, I saw this, but I didn't know this was actually the criteria, because it's just, it's, it's personal qualifications, thirty, but based on what? Like, you know, uh, that's, that's what I mean, like, is this the one you're talking about here, this one?
Yes, yeah. So it's, it's very general, because again, we're not asking for cost, we're just asking for the qualifications.
Right, we're not asking for bids.
Right, and so we're just com- comparing their experiences and, and, you know, similar projects that they've, that they've done and references and so forth. And so we, we, we ask for information specifically underneath that table, there's a, a breakdown or at least a description rather of each criteria, and so we're asking for that, that information. And we, we rank them, or you rank them, should you decide to rank them, uh, based on, on that.
So they break it down.
I believe the, the motion was for administration to rank them, correct?
Yes, admin.
Yeah, for, it was for admin to rank them.
Yeah.
And these are, and so these proposals, are they, are they also gonna be submitted? Like, are they sealed, uh, also, or are they, how, how does that work?
For RFQs, the-
It's just general, yeah, it's just qualifications, no dollar amount. The second portion is the sealed.
The second portion, it's the sealed, right.
Okay.
We accept them all sealed.
All right, no, you answer my questions.
And during the second portion, we will have to work with them to get us a cost because of the ESSER funding requirements. Federal funds, uh, require that we do, uh, s- set a contract based on cost.
So how, how are they gonna assist you with that? Are they gonna, you do, like you said, they're gonna put it out there for, for proposals, sealed bids?
Right.
And who's gonna get those, the firm or the, the district?
No, we, we-
You get them, right? Okay.
We make that selection.
Okay. Thank you.
On the design build part, if I may add a little bit, is to ne- uh, narrow the group to at least five, to sure. If we have seven, we cut it to five, we want it three, all three.
And I'm just curious about the sealed bid process, who received those? I know you said business office, but who in the business office to get them, get them? How are they secured, those type of things? I was just, I never asked and I'm curious.
Yeah, the reception is receives it, the, the reception is receives it.
Mm-hmm.
And they mark the time, the date they come in and they give it to the purchasing department.
Okay, and he puts it in like in a safe or what, what?
No.
Oh, no, just their, just their-
No, his office.
They're sealed, so, so it's a timely opening and, and, you know, anybody can attend this, this, uh, this, uh, events, then they know that they're, they're being opened for the first time, yes.
Okay. All right, sir, thank you, appreciate all the information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, had a motion for item K, A, B, and C. Let's take it to a vote, signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
I mean, I-
Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
And, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we did have a motion and we did have a, okay, so-
Yeah, we did.
Mr. Nieto, are, are you messing with me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that, it's all good. Item L.
Reading.
Discussion and possible action to approve the-
Owen said yes.
District to become members of the Texas High School Clay Target League and allocate funding in accordance with current funding policies. Dr. Coronel.
Uh, before I mention this, Board President and members of, it is really nice to see all of you smile, thank you. So, yeah, the, the board meetings that I watched prior to me getting here, you know, but, uh, it is really nice and it's very enjoyable to be here, thank you.
Shots fired.
All right, uh, speaking of shots fired, all right, here, so, uh-
Good segue right there.
This is, uh, um, I lost my train of thought and I, I have to read it. I'm just recommending that we become, uh, members of the Texas High School Clay Target League and allocate funding in accordance with current funding, current funding policies. This is a UIL activity and an Olympic sport is clay shooting, um, so we just have to, this, this allows us to legitimize our current shooting team.
So move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by, by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Mr. Nieto.
Correct.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded.
Correct.
Do we have any discussion?
Thank you for, for bringing it. Dr. Coronado, I know I had reached out to Board President, uh, to put it on prior, but, you know, uh, we have some great kids that really compete, you know, and, and me having a son that, that actually competes and I get to go see the other schools and I'm like, why can't we do it? And Mr. Delasantos always, why do we always have to wait on somebody else to do it first? And, uh, I know Sherry has one student that shoots, but that's it, uh, but here we have some great shooters that have competed and have won scholarship monies, uh, so to that, depending on, on how we vote, I, I'd like to thank all of you.
And, um, I know I discussed it with Mr. Gonzalez and we've all discussed it, you know, in, in some form, I just wanted to ask for the public, because they're gonna hear about the topic and, and, and the direction that we're taking, but what, what safety precautions are put into place? Cuz I know that, that's gonna be questions that I'm, that I'm probably gonna get, um, as far as when we open this up. How does this operate? Where does it take place and what kind of safety precautions are, are, are put into place for, for student safety and, and also for, um, like I said, even learning how to operate a weapon, even as an adult, sometimes people don't understand, you know, how, how to, you know, safety procedures, how to hold the weapon, et cetera, so, what, what, how does this work?
Um, so once we become members, um, we, we, we're, there's actually training involved, um, for, for the instructors, it's gun safety and so forth and, uh, you, you know, for, off the record, I have a federal firearms license and, and I'm a licensed carry instructor as well. Um, but, um, so, so if they need any assistance with that, I can, I can assist with that.
That's great.
But, but, um, so, so I, I volunteer for that, uh, and no stipend either, so.
There's another one.
Shots fired. Sense of humor, sense of humor, folks, okay.
It's already part of the story.
And our current, and one of our act teachers is already certified as, as well.
So, so it, basically, it, it, the hardest part about this one is the range requirements and, and where they shoot and, and the location. It, it just has to be, uh, formalized and, and, and authorized, uh, and we can make sure that those, once this, now this is approved, approved, um, we can allocate the, the funding to make sure that that range is actually safe and there and done.
Right, and this is the range-
And just so that, so that y'all know, as parents, uh, and those are parents that are watching as well, uh, just a, a case in point, most student athletes have to attain at least, it's about a thirty-minute safety course, class, prior to them even being allowed onto the range, uh, at least at the national shoots, that's how they do it, all our local shoots, uh, basically the, the same way, uh, whether you go to Coyote Arms or where you go to the ones further north of Edingberg, uh, but there's always a safety class kinda, uh, before, especially with the, with the student, with the UIL ones, when I take my son and his friends to go to the San Antonio, the, number one thing is gun safety. Uh, but there's always a safety class kinda, uh, before, especially with the, with the student, with the U I L ones. When I take my son and his friends to go to the San Antonio, the number one thing is gun safety. And, uh, you know, just so y'all are aware of it, and I'd be more than happy to share videos of, of when I've taken my son and some of the other parents that have taken these videos, uh, to share along with y'all.
Now, uh, along the lines of, uh, safety training, I know that before you ever go on, on a hunting trip, when you get a certain nade, that Texas Parks and Wildlife requires hunter education. So is this kinda the same kinda training that they have on?
There, there still is a process that our students are gonna have to go through. It, it's, it is formal. It's, it's, you know, if, if you join any type of, uh, activity, um, you know, athletic activity or even, even, even our own academic, but that, you have to know the rules of the game.
There you go.
And, and so that, that's what, and, and all that is part of this process.
And this is a volunteer basis? This is with parent consent and firearms are being provided by the parents?
Yes, yes, sir.
The school district is not providing.
My, my question, uh, because of funding, I'm thinking, but funding wise, I know you said, okay, we, we'll have volunteers, uh, but you're gonna need funds from somewhere. We're gonna take them from somewhere to give to here, right? So, but I'm thinking, okay, we have mariachi over here who can't even afford to buy strings or can't even afford to buy instruments for their, you know, mariachi kids, but yet we're taking funds to give them to another club. I just wanna make sure that it's equal, that we're meeting the needs of everybody and I understand.
Well, fees and, uh, fees and membership fees per student is based on the parents, isn't that?
And that's what I was about to ask. How is this going to work? Kinda like, like at, let's say like FFA, where you're kind of in charge of your own thing or how is it gonna work?
So it's still, it's still an activity. It's still a student activity, so we still allocate funding for that activity. Now, I'll just, I, I don't wanna get off topic here regarding the mariachi thing. The problem with the, the mariachi one was that it was underfunded through the band. So in other words, we need to create our own funding source or allocate funding source for the mariachi program separate from the band. That, that's the reason for that. So that's an, that's an easy fix.
Yeah.
Um, so we can do that. This would be the same way. We allocate, um, of funding for this just the same way we were, we, we will do with the mariachi program.
Or any other, you know, any other.
Or any other program.
There's, there are a bunch of other ones that, that need funds.
And, and that sponsor would have, and that sponsor would have control over that funding.
Okay.
And I think that was the same kinda like for the conjunto initiative, right?
Yes.
Right.
It's, it's gonna be separate from, from band.
Right.
And the kid, this wouldn't be like during the day kinda class, it would be an after school activity or something?
It, it's, it's still, it's still an activity. It's extracurricular.
Okay.
Or, yeah, extracurricular or co-curricular based on FFA.
So I think, is this, is Sherrilyn the only other district here in the valley?
They're, they're the only ones listed as members and they have two, they have two campuses.
They have one shooter. We have one at Wesco East and we have about seven at Wesco High and all of them are really, really good.
So we're looking at about ten, fifteen kids at the most.
For now.
For now.
For now. Once, once we start allocating funding for this and, and, and again, the, we can operate, um, any program with a number of sponsors, you, you know, that, um, you know, just like anything else. It's, we, we can solicit sponsors and, uh, and partners, uh, to support these as well.
And I think one of the things like to answer, uh, Mrs. Saita's question is we're, we're joining the association as a school district.
That's correct.
Yes, that's, that's what we're doing. Rather than the kids going independently and playing, I mean, I'm sorry, not playing, but, but competing, they will be, you know, representing the school district when they go and compete.
So right now, like.
It's gonna be off campus.
Our students at high, they go under Wesco FFA.
Right.
Right. Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I, what, what I'm saying is, what I, but he answered my question. It, where are we gonna get the funding from to fund? But everybody, this is gonna have its own little budget or fund.
That's why we're cutting all the coaching stipends. So I'm just kidding.
And that's why you're going to, uh, that's why you're gonna teach it.
See, you gotta have a sense of humor up here, I'm telling you, so.
Yes, you do.
You said you're gonna teach it.
Doctor, Doctor Coronado, you said you, each campus was, was gonna work their own budget, so.
Right.
That will come into play.
And based on their activities, yes.
The student-based funding, right?
Yes.
Correct.
And it starts in middle school, high school? When does it start?
Uh, FFA is, is starts, they have junior FFA as well.
You gotta be eight years old or in second grade.
So if I want my kids to do it, I have to go buy the stuff they need?
Mm-hmm.
And then they'll take part.
Right, yeah.
And they go through the training. We're not doing any of that.
That's why I wanna make clear to the, to the public, we're joining the association so that they can, they can compete under the Wesco I O D name, but parents are paying fees, parents are buying equipment, parents are buying firearms, parents, you know, all that is.
Buying the membership.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, what, and it's free, but I mean, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's free. Okay, well, that answers another question. It's a free membership, okay. Cause usually now every membership costs something.
And Texas Parks and Wildlife is really a, a huge supporter of the association.
And, and all FFLs, believe it or not, donate to.
Yes, sir.
All of these things. I, I know because I donate every year, so.
Sounds good. Okay, any further discussion? Please take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye. Mr. Nieto.
Aye.
Mrs. Saita.
Aye.
Costa Viño.
Aye.
Doctor Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos.
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item M. Discussion and possible action for the Board to consider approval of the Wesco I O D compensation plan for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Doctor Coronado.
Uh, Board President, members of the Board, I'd like to recommend that you adopt the compensation plan minus this academic and athletic stipend schedule. Move to approve.
Second, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Mr. Delos Santos. Do we have any discussion?
Yes. Looking, looking over this, uh, this, the, what is this called here? I mean, it's compensation plan, but the actual policies, the, the regulations in the compensation plan, um, it does talk about incentives and stipends. And one of the biggest concerns that I've had since I, since two years ago was with these, uh, travel stipends that.
The gas.
The gas stipends that I don't see anywhere in here as a stipend.
Because we took them off.
No, well, it wasn't ever in here, uh, before. Like there's a stipend, there was stipend lists and it was even before you were here, Doctor Coronado, that, that, there was no travel, you, it's reimbursement, you, you put your mileage in, you know, you get, you get it paid back. But that gas stipend or travel stipend, it's not in here. So I just wanna make sure that we are following what this policy says and that if you are going to be demoted or promoted, that we're following what it says. Because a lot of times, you know, people get moved here and there, but keep the salary. Or there, there's a lot of things in here that I wanna make sure we follow this.
Sure, yeah, and I agree because she's right. There are cases where people have been demoted seven years, you know, years ago and then they kept their, their, their salaries. Has all that been addressed and, and has all that been looked at?
So what we've, what, um, yes, it has been addressed. Uh, because, um, this is a new year for this, the, the recommendation is that, that people will be placed into the proper grade and category. However, the standard practices is that everybody gets that one year, right? Basically on the district before they, they, uh, they migrate to the correct salary. Uh, but, but that, which is standard practice, um, in, in, in most districts, you know? I mean, if, if, I, I mean, we, we, we talked about the athletic stipends and making those cuts and.
Right.
That didn't go very well. And so, right now, I'm not even, I don't even wanna go about touching the actual employees' salaries.
Right.
Right? So I, I'd rather just recommend that we go with the compensation plan, um, as, uh, as presented, uh, keeping employees' salaries the same, uh, for this particular year.
Yes.
Yes, we don't wanna touch our salaries. We just wanna make sure that we're, if anything happens during the year, like reassignments, that we are actually following our policy.
Yes.
And it's just to, yeah, it's just to reaffirm that those, those issues have, have been, have been identified. Cause I know you just came on, but we already talked about them with, with, um, I can't say this is a charting cause it's not the same one, but we, we've discussed them before, uh, with, with the previous leadership here. And that there was issues and, and those things affected morale and, 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 and people knew about that throughout the district and where people were demoted from, from, from years, for years and kept their, and kept their salary. So we just wanna make sure that before we move forward going into twenty-two, twenty-three, all that's been looked at and all that's been identified and, and there's an action plan.
And, and there are some, there are some, uh, salaries that exceed, um, the job pay grade, uh, that, uh, that we're going to have to be able to adjust.
Another question, Doctor Coronado, I know you, it was before you're, you were here with us, but there were a couple of positions on the compensation plan that we were trying to get fixed up and, you know, cleaned up that didn't exist. But then I know that we had said, maybe they should stay there because it's kind of set aside money that we might need somewhere in Cumberland. Did we clean up the compensation plan to get rid of those positions or they're still there? I haven't.
What we did with the compensation plan is actually, we made the, the, um, the pay grades more generic, uh, to allow for, for discretion. So in other words, we had an assistant superintendent for elementary. We had assistant superintendent for, um, business services and assistant superintendent, all this other stuff. Now it's just assistant superintendent. So this is your pay grade. So, so that allows us that if we need to change a title, it's in, and they have an assistant superintendent, then that's their pay grade.
Flexibility.
Right? So it just allows us that because it locks us in. When, when you, um, make something that, that specific, you, you really have, you, you know, we're coming back to the board just to change a position, um, or a title and, and that really doesn't allow room for growth.
Well, I guess I'm looking for it specifically because I remember, uh, seeing it. Is there still an athletic, uh, assistant director? No.
No.
That's already not here, okay, cause I didn't see it and I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, cause usually a district, they'll have the, like you said, standard generic pay skills and then they'll have the list of all the individuals that, that, that are hired in the district and then they'll have their numbers, whether they're one-on-ones, et cetera, one-of-twos, so.
Yeah, we've really, I, I would tell you this, the compensation plan has been, I've been here six weeks and we have been working on it for six weeks. And, and so it has been, um, I, I have to thank Megan and Daughter Lisa and Dan, I don't know if you did a whole lot with it, but you know, just. But I know Daughter Lisa and Megan have worked, I, I, I called Daughter Lisa on Sunday and she said, oh, I'm in the office, cause I, I had, she goes, oh, I, I felt horrible that she was in the office on a Sunday. But, uh, this has been, um, this has been a chore. This has been a heavy lift for us. It needed to happen, um, but, uh, it right sizes the district and you can see even with a three percent pay raise, even with all the other things that we're bringing to the table, we're still below what we spent in salaries in twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and, and forecasting in twenty-three. We're still below, so.
One more question, Doctor, from some teachers that have asked me, there, there are some, I guess it would be here, the instructional coaches that we're going to be, uh, using. There, there already exists instructional coaches, right, at, at the campuses? So are we adding two or is it?
So, so what we've done is, um, uh, so we had, um, I T Cs, instructional technology coaches. So now we have, um, we, we've done away with that title and just called them instructional coaches because now we can pay for them out of Title One. Um, and what we did was, we, we've, we've removed the, the CIFs. So even when I got here, I didn't even know what a CIF was and I come to find out it's an assistant principal, right? Well, they deserve, they, they have the certificate and the credentials to be called assistant principals. So, so we, we remove them, which means that they have to be paid out of the general fund. But then we were paying for I T Cs, um, with, with a various funding. So what we've done is, we, we've done it correctly now. Our administrators are gonna be paid out of the general fund, our coaches are, and, uh, we should have two coaches. We've allocated two coaches. We've already allocated funding for every campus to have two coaches and that's state comp ed. State comp ed, not title, I'm sorry. So thank you. Uh, that's why he's there, right? So just to keep me on my toes. But, uh, but so we're gonna use state comp ed, um, to, to provide two coaches. Now it'll be up to the campus to determine, I want an instructional coach or I want a literacy coach or I want a numeracy coach, but the, either way, they're coaches, so.
Okay, so any type of instructional coaches, the campus needs.
That the campus needs or wants, ba- based on their budget.
Right, which they'll be in control of.
Which they'll be in control of, right?
You know, sir.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
No, if, if they only want one coach, which I, I, I wouldn't recommend, um, but, uh, they, they can pay for one or, but they'll, they'll be allocated for two coaches.
Hence why we have those open positions right now.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Cause right now we only have twenty coaches on the books or.
We have eighteen on the books.
Eighteen on the books, yes.
We're adding an additional sixteen.
Okay.
So each campus can have up to two.
Up to two coaches, yes. And again, we think we have twenty-seven excess, well, we have twenty, the recommendation was that twenty-seven teachers needed to be absorbed. Imagine that. Now we're going to be able to absorb these by expanding our coaches. So now our teachers, some of our teachers have an opportunity, right? Internal only to become coaches.
Right.
Yes, that's exactly, okay.
You know, um, I just wanna commend, uh, you and the H R department for, for publishing, uh, for, for publishing this form online and, and to increase transparency, the compensation plan. I, I, I know you said that you've been working on it for six weeks. I've been here eighteen months and it took me a year to get it and I'm a board member. So, yes, go figure. But, um, but I, I really do recommend you all the, you know, for, for posting that because it's, it's, it's part of transparency, it's, it's part of showing, uh, showing everyone kind of where we fall, what the skills are. And also I know that in the past, people had told me, well, we don't wanna lose leverage, et cetera, but I think you gain leverage by showing people what we're paying. We've been paying, we're, we, we're a top paying school district here in the valley.
We are.
And with the pay though, of course, is the, the, the requirement of excellence, you know? Uh, we, we pay well, but we also have expectations. The community has expectations and that's something that the staff also needs to know that we'll increase salaries as, as, as much as possible. We'll pay, you, we'll pay for qualif- qualifications and expectations, but in return, the community, cause I've heard it too, and, and they're supportive of that. They wanna have high quality, uh, instructional materials, they wanna have high quality instructors in the classrooms and we're gonna have to pay for that, but we're also gonna, we're, in return, the return on the investment is academic excellence. And so that's something we, we have, we've been talking about everything else but that and, and that's the final requirement as well too, cause you just talked about scores that are coming back. So I think that's something we need to look at in the future.
Yes.
I do have one comment on here. I don't know if it would be here or where it would be. I know we give the teachers, is it, is it five days, five local, five state days, whenever they're absent?
Five and five.
Five and five.
Can we look at, uh, removing the forty dollar fee that we charge a teacher? Where, where does that money go to? We charge a teacher forty dollars for an absent, whenever they're gonna be absent. What, what is that? I know you're, you're.
There's a fee for take days.
Well, they take it away from you.
I've never heard of that.
So I would, I would like for us to, to look at, I don't know what, I, I thought maybe it would be here.
At, in here.
The policy?
It's, it's in D E C, so it's in our local policy, so it would just be a matter of.
Modifying it.
Policy and.
Modifying policy.
Okay, that's.
Wasn't it like twenty-five dollars?
If everyone's in agreement, I've never heard of a charge to take your days.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's been there and, and, and I think, um.
And if you take a half.
I know other school districts don't do it, yes.
Really?
I always took half days.
But we can take care, well, I can recommend that we can take care of that.
Okay, so.
Figure it out. We'll, we'll take, I'll, I'll, I'll have that in the June twenty-first meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, one more question, I just ran into it. The teacher incentive allotment, the T I A, I know a lot of teachers ask me, what, you know, I, they've been working hard on that cause I see it all the time in our updates, the T I A and all these meetings we're having. How does a teacher get certified through the National Board Certification to be qualified to receive this money? Cause I, if I recall, I think one teacher from Wesco East got it last year or the year before.
Right.
Doc, yes, I remember only one. I, I just thought it's, uh, this is an awesome opportunity for more teachers to get more money. But how, why is it so difficult to get this or what, what are we doing to help them?
It, it's a long process to be nationally board certified.
Okay.
Teacher, it's, and so that's just but one pathway to qualify for the T I A, for the teacher incentive allotment. The other, the other pathway, we're, we are, um, cohort E, cohort E for the teacher incentive allotment and that training is, is forthcoming. And teachers, you know, we, we brought in MAP already and that, which is the, will, will be the benchmark to, to, for growth. Uh, but then teachers, um, I don't remember what the amount, but that money's already been allocated to the district. We just had, basically had to apply for it. But I think the tier, after the year, tier one, I believe it's seven thousand dollars in addition to whatever they're making here. And then it, it tiers up based on, on the, on the growth percentage.
I think there's three, three tiers.
There's three tiers.
Right.
Yes. So some teachers, uh, there's teachers across the state making six figures.
Right.
Uh, you know, based on performance, but it's all performance based.
So that's why each school is listed here and then it says recognized exemplary master. Cause if you're at that school and you're recognized as one of these teachers, either recognized or mastered, they'll pay you that much?
That's correct. And, and the, and it follows with you. So let's say you're, you, you, um, you've earned, um, your T I A here, but then you leave to another district, it actually, that money follows you.
Right.
So it follows the teacher, it doesn't follow the dis-.
Right.
The, the district is allocated for it, but it actually, the money actually follows the teacher.
The person.
The person, yes.
Okay.
So they get that, they get that identifier for the rest of their careers, no matter where they go, that district's gonna provide that.
Because we have two in our district that came in.
Right.
And we paid them, so.
And this federal, federal for the.
State.
State, state.
State.
Do we know if we have more teachers who are going to qualify for this other than, other than one?
I, I don't know the status on, on that right now.
We have one teacher that transferred in that is nationally certified, so that makes two that will now.
Oh, okay. That, there's my answer, two.
Uh, good evening, Doctor Coronado, Coach Cuar, members of the Board. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're in a data gathering year. So we're gonna set all the baselines, all the benchmarks throughout this entire year and there still is a lot of training that goes with it. As we get into twenty-three, twenty-four, that's when our te- teachers will be eligible for some of these T I A funds, again, based on success of our students. And again, it's tiered out and everything that goes with it. But the first part is this coming year is the grant year. April fifteenth, basically one month ago, more or less, that was when our cohort E application was due interned in the region one.
Okay, so till, until twenty twenty-three, twenty-four is when we'll.
That is correct.
See it, okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And teachers already know that, right?
Yes.
Cause we've been having regular meetings with teachers and we do have to have an advisory committee that is formed.
Right.
With teachers to set up, uh, you know, the, the, the plan and the criteria.
Correct.
And, and again, you know, the structures are based on the demographic of the campus, so it also depends on the campus that they're at. But you need this data gathering year to be able to establish that growth.
Correct.
So this first year is where they're gonna set that baseline. And then the next year is where we'll start to see those growth trends and where they'll start to, to qualify for those amounts. for those amounts.
The key behind this is there's a lot of stakeholder engagement. So we're gathering a lot of feedback from our stakeholders. So we want to make sure that this is a collaborative decision-making process with all our keep, uh, people within our district.
Okay.
Thank you.
My next question, I'm just scrolling down, I'm sorry. I see bilingual education stipend. I saw online that we had a dual-language principal position open, and I said, ah, yay! So are we, are we doing this? How is this going to work with a bilingual?
The secret is ours. So.
It's online! I saw it, it's public.
So we are, are, there's, we're going to choose four campuses that are going to be the future home of. And one of those campuses going, is going to be a dual-language academy. It is going to be a magnet. In fact, you approved some of the references in the consent agenda. And so, we've, we're starting that process to create a dual-language academy. And then, we're going to start two, I think, two STEAM academies, and then, we're looking at a middle school to be a fine arts academy.
Right.
And it's going to be this upcoming twenty-twenty-two school year.
So, so this twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be their planning year. So we'll, we'll get the banner saying future home of, and it'll be their planning year. It allows the principals time to assess their staff, figure out who wants to be there, who doesn't want to be there, who wants to go there. But really kind of do that planning year, and then, we go full-fledged in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
So, but a lot of people, you know, when we start announcing the future home of, we, we think that will start to attract a lot of folks, increase enrollment, people will want to be on the ground floor of that.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking about this stipend is because I know that I had heard about some legislation, how we had to have bilingual students placed together and not, you know.
They, the, the program, yeah, the program changed its, it's not, I don't think it's legislation, it's the program requirements changed.
Oh, I thought it was legislation. I thought it was a law. So, i- is this going to affect any of our stipends here?
No.
Okay.
No, it, it shouldn't. And again, we haven't, we haven't received any of the academic stipend studies, which is the fine arts academic study and so forth. And once we, so we'll have those agenda items for June twenty-first, we'll finalize the athletic and the academic, which is the fine arts and the department heads and so forth. And so, those two stipend studies we'll have for you on June twenty-first.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any more questions? If not, let's take item to the, to a vote. Signify your approval by saying a, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Saito?
Aye.
Uh, Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Dos Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion carries. For item twelve, closed meeting to discuss A, personnel matters, Texas government code five-five-one point zero-seven-four. One, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation on certified professional personnel. Two, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation on resignations, retirements of certified professional personnel. Three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Texas government code five-five-one point zero-seven-four and five-five-one point zero-seven-one. A, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of assistant superintendent for teaching, learning, and innovation. B, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of assistant superintendent for school leadership. C, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation on the reassignments of professional staff based on the new organizational chart. And B, consultation with attorney regarding A, pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the West Echo ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five-five-one of the Texas government code, Texas government code five-five-one point zero-seven-one. The time now is nine sixteen, and we will go into closed session.
Now is ten seventeen and we have reconvened in open meeting. Item A, possible action necessary on items discussed in closed meeting. Number one, discussing a possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation on employment of certified professional personnel. Dr. Coronel.
Board President, members of the board, I'd like you to accept my recommendation for the employment of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lo Santos and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. We've had the discussion in there, so let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying "aye" when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation on resignations, retirements of certified professional personnel. Dr. Coronel.
Board President, members of the board, I'd like to recommend you approve the resignations and retirements of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Motion approved.
I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second. By Mr. Lo Santos. Take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying "aye" when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. Dr. Coronel.
Board President, members of the board, I'd like you to accept my recommendation for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning, and Innovation.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Lo Santos? Second. Second by Costa Vino. Take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying "aye" when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership. Dr. Coronel.
Board President, members of the board, I'd like you to accept my recommendation for the position of Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership as discussed in closed session.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Mr. Lo Santos.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by...
You can get it.
Okay, Mrs. Saita, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying "aye" when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation on the reassignment of professional staff based on the new organizational chart. Dr. Coronel.
Board President, members of the board, as discussed in closed session, it's my recommendation for the reassignment of professional staff based on the new org chart.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion by Mrs. Saita.
Second.
Second by Dr. Rodriguez. Take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying "aye" when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fourteen, adjournment.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. The time now is ten twenty-one and we are adjourned.